Good afternoon, everyone. If we'll come to order, it's October 23rd, 1:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting of the Durham City Council Work Session officially to order for the purposes of faithfully discharging the business of the people of Durham. Good afternoon to my honorable colleagues, to our staff, all who are in room with us today, and all who are watching, whatever platform you may be watching. His honor, the mayor, is en route and should be with us shortly, but we want to keep fidelity with our schedule and go ahead and get started. With that, I'm going to ask Madam Clerk if you would call a roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Mayor Williams is delayed. He's on his way. Mayor Protem Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Rist received an excused absence for today, and that's it.
All right, the chair deems that we do have quorum. At this time, I'm going to yield to my honorable colleagues for any announcements they may have. Councilmember Cook, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Just a brief reminder that we are still in the middle of early voting. We talked about this in the meeting on Monday, but the only thing on your ballot is municipal elections. I know it's not the sexiest election of all time, but we have already beaten some of our other municipalities across North Carolina in terms of our primary voting record, and I hope to blow them out of the water for our general. So, everyone, please exercise this right that we currently have and hopefully will maintain forever. Okay.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Baker, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. In this room, it's one of the sexier elections, I'd say. Good afternoon to everyone. Thank you all for being here. Looking forward to a good and productive meeting. Nothing for me today. Thanks.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Caballero, good afternoon.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Good to be with you all. Very quickly, it's municipal voting season, but also it is participatory budgeting voting season. PB has kicked off officially. Look for community events across the city. I really want to shout out PB's staff. They do a phenomenal job. I will be with our PB delegates this evening in celebration of all the work that they've done. Remember that you are allowed to vote in PB anytime you are 13 years and older, regardless of your status. It is purposely designed to include as many Durham residents as possible. I think proportionately, even though our dollars aren't as large as other communities, I think we still have the largest PB program in the country, and we are celebrated nationally for it. So, I know PB's staff has been working with kids voting to be in our schools, to get our DPS students to vote, so that they also get in that muscle memory of being used to voting and being participatory in our civic process, and that's why we designed PB the way we did. So, again, PB is open. You can vote online, or you can vote at a community event. They will be everywhere, and our goal is 15,000 voters. PB Cycle 1, we hit 10. PB Cycle 2, it was a little different because of COVID. PB Cycle 3, we hit 12,000 voters, and our goal this year is 15,000 voters. So, please, including councilmembers, do your jobs and vote in PB. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Freeman, good afternoon.
Thank you. I'll just repeat, the early voting is open for municipal elections, and we've got about 12 more days, so get out and vote. Also, I wanted to just highlight that there are a number of bond items in this current work session which are coming forward from staff, and I do want to just say that this is what it looks like for our tax dollars to be used to make sure that our infrastructure's in place to support our growth. And then, lastly, I want to echo Councilmember Caballero's point. PB budgeting voting is open, and I want to make sure that you know that the projects are all listed on the website. Please take a look at them and then go out and choose which ones should be selected. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, councilmembers. I'll disassociate myself with all of the announcements today. I don't have any announcements. We'll certainly defer to the mayor when he gets here to see if he may have any. With that, we'll get right into our priority items, and I'll yield to our city manager pending priority items he may have. Good afternoon, Mr. Manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, members of council. Good to see you today. City manager's office has one priority item, and just a few quick announcements. The priority item is Agenda Item Number 25. This is Contract with Peregrine Technologies, Inc. to Procure an Operations Management Platform for the Durham City Police Department. A supplemental item was added to your agenda. And then, just informationally wanted, we have two presentations shown on your agenda today, the Strategic Plan and the 2024 Bond Update. We're asking you to take those out of order, certainly that the bond presentation would come first in the presentations. The Strategic Plan, it was our intention that that be the last item on today's agenda, and obviously you know that will take several hours. So, just wanted to request that adjustment to the agenda and thank the councilmembers who shouted out PB. We're really excited about this year's process, and so we appreciate the extra plug for those events. We're excited to get that voting started. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. At this time, I'll yield to our city attorney for any priority items she may have. Good afternoon, counselor.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, members of the council. It's good to be back with you. The city attorney's office has no priority items this afternoon.
Thank you so much. And at this time, I'll yield to the clerk for any priority items she may have. Good afternoon, Madam Clerk.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Protem and councilmembers. I did want to let you know there's a delay in the board report, and I will be bringing it forward toward the end of the meeting today.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that. All right, colleagues, at this time now, I'll read our administrative consent items. Item can be pulled by any member of the council or public for a deeper dive, and I'll start that reading now. The city clerk's office, item number one, the approval of city council minutes.
Mayor, I don't want to pull the item. I just want to point out the actual day in the minutes for September need to be corrected from Monday to Tuesday. That's all.
Noted. Thank you for that. Continuing, item number two, Durham Planning Commission Appointment. Item number three, Human Relations Commission Appointment. Under departmental items, from our Audit Services Department. Item four, Solid Waste Management Division Overtime Performance Audit, September 2025. From Budget and Management Services Department. Item five, FY '26 to '27 Budget Development Schedule.
I'd like to pull that one.
Item five is pulled. Continuing, from our Community Safety Department. Item six, Robert Wood Johnson Foundation Systems for Action Grant Project Ordinance. Under Environmental and Street Services Department. Item number seven, Contract SW-103 Street Maintenance Repairs, 2025. Item number eight, Contract SW-103C Inspection Services for Street Maintenance Repairs, 2025. Item number nine, Amendment Number One to Utility Agreement for Eastern Connector with NC DOT U-0071. Item number 10, Contract SW-66 Bike Walk Sidewalk Phase One, 2024 Bond Referendum. Item number 11, Contract SW-66C Inspections and Ombudsman Services for New Sidewalk, 2024 Bond Referendum. Item 12, Contract ST-337 Unpaid Roads, PH-1-2024 Bond Referendum. Item 13, Stormwater Control. Item number 12, actually, we have, is pulled. We have a speaker on that. Item number 13, Stormwater Control Measure Maintenance, SD-2025-03.
I want to pull that one.
Item number 13?
Yes.
All right. Item number 13 is pulled. From General Services Department. Item number 14, Grant Project Ordinance for the North Carolina Office of State Budget and Management Directed Grant, Number 12241, for Conservation Activities to the City of Durham.
I don't want to pull it. Just want to appreciate our council for approving this moving forward.
Item number 15, Resolution Providing Approval of a Multifamily Housing Facility to be Known as Fayette Place, Phase One in the Financing thereof.
I want to pull that one.
The Parks and Recreation Department. Item 16, Transportation Improvement Agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for the Durham to Roxboro Trail Corridor. That is pulled by a resident. By a resident. Under Technology Solutions Department. Item 17, Contract with Karasoff Technology Corporation to Purchase and Implement Claritai.
Okay, pull that one.
17 is pulled. Under our Transportation Department. Item 18, Supplemental Agreement Number Two, the Governing Agreement Number 21567 with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. for Signal Timing Improvements.
I want to pull that one.
Item number 18 is pulled. From Water Management Department. Item 19, Construction Award to ASJ Wilson Construction LLC for the Durham Utilities Pettigrew Storage Site Project. Item 20, Construction Award to Harper General Contractors, Inc. for the Glen Road 1 Lift Station Improvements Project. Item number 20.
20.
20, you're pulling 20? 20 is pulled. Item number 21, Contract Amendment Five to the Professional Engineering Services Contract with Hazen and Sawyer PC for the East Durham Water and Sewer Rehabilitation and Belt Street Regional Stormwater Improvements Project. Item number 22, Contract Amendment Number Two to the Professional Engineering Services Contract with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. for the 2021 Lift Station Improvement, Group B Lift Stations Project, Contract Number 18078. Under Presentations from our Budget and Management Services Department. FY '27 through '29 Strategic Plan Refresh Process. That is slated to go two hours. That will be the last presentation we receive. From our General Services Department. Item number 24, 2024 General Obligation Bond Referendum Projects Progress Update Presentation. That presentation is slated to go 20 minutes. Under Citizens Matters to be Heard at One, I have a card from Haley Cunningham, Subjects Community Leadership Roundtable Invitation. And under our Technology Solutions Department. Item number 25, Contract with Peregrine Technologies, Inc. to Procure an Operations Management Platform for Durham City Police, and that item is pulled by a resident. And that ends the reading of our published agenda for today, our published consent agenda. I have pulled items number five, 12, 13, 15, 16, 17, 18, 20, and 25. Mr. Manager, do you concur?
I do.
All right, those items are pulled. We'll take them in order. First, we're going to entertain our public speaker today, our public comment from Haley Cunningham. Is Haley here? Good afternoon. Thank you for being with us. You'll have three minutes. Thank you. dais. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon, everyone.
We're going through pulled items now.
How many pulled items do we have?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
How many of these did Chelsea?
It's actually nine. Yes, good afternoon. Thank you so much. You have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'm Dr. Haley Cunningham. I'm an HIV provider and co-chair of the Coalition in the HIV Epidemic in Durham. I'm just here to invite you all in person to our Community Leadership Roundtable Discussion tomorrow from 9:30 until 2:00 at Healing with Care. We're going to be bringing together researchers and clinicians from Duke and UNC, NCCU, as well as community organizations and community members to really design and think about what we need in a system of care for those living with HIV in Durham. As you all know, each year Durham receives over $1 million in HOPLA funding for housing and support services for folks living with HIV, and over two years of that funding remains untouched. And so, we are hoping that some of the outcome and aims of this roundtable can be to really light a fire and discuss ways that we can utilize this funding. One thing that I ask you all to look into is that I'm worried that if this funding is not used by the end of the year, some of it will need to be sent back. There is a deadline on how quickly we need to use these funds, and if we have to send funds back, that jeopardizes funding down the road. If you don't use it, you lose it, and we'll have to send it back to HUD, which would be really unfortunate to lose those housing funds. So, I ask you all to look into that, to also consider and really partner with community organizations to figure out how to best allocate this funding. Y'all released a call for proposals in June, well, in May, and then we were supposed to find out in June who received that, only to find out in September it had been withdrawn, and we're back to the drawing board. And I'm really, really worried that this funding is not going to be used in time. So, I ask you all to really consider coming tomorrow to hear what the community has to say, and internally to look into this and see when this deadline is so that we don't have to send any money back. Thank you all.
Dr. Cunningham, thank you so much for the important work you do. Would you give us a time again?
Yes, it's 9:30 until 2:00. Most of the discussion about HOPLA and housing will be between 9:30 and noon, and it's at Healing with Care.
Thank you so much. It's good to see you. Mr. Mayor, you want to assume?
Yeah, well, yeah, in just a second. Dr. Cunningham, just want to thank you for the work you're doing. Within the next week, I believe, there is an op-ed that's coming out in the Hill that I wrote about this very topic.
Oh, wow.
And I'm glad that you're here speaking on it today with the reorganization in DHHS. Obviously, this is something that's potentially on the cutting block, and it's an op-ed asking Congress to keep funding in place, although the reorganization suggested by President Trump has potentially jeopardized its funding for residents with HIV AIDS. So, it'll be in the Hill, and you shoot me an email. I can send that to you directly.
Yeah, thank you so much for writing that, and I guess I just want to say too that using the money we have is the best way to show that it's needed and we appreciate it. So, I hope we can allocate that money quickly. Thank you.
Follow up with it. What you got?
First pulled items, item number.
Oh, just Cook has something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Forgive me.
That's okay. This is something that's come up a couple of times, and I would like at least somewhat public response to why that RFP was not, why we didn't award it in June, and what is going on with it now, because I know that that deadline is approaching. I know we've had some issues with HOPLA funding in the past, and so a report would be appreciated.
We'll be happy to bring that forward, and our staff will be at the summit tomorrow and will be represented.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, anyone else on that? All right, Councilmember Cook, I'll yield to you for item number five. I'm sorry, Councilmember Caballero, forgive me.
I'm just flagging, and I don't know yet, but I'm likely going to be out of town Friday, February 13th.
Okay. Was that it?
That's it. I just wanted to go ahead and flag.
Got you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, item number 12, we have a speaker, Brad Johnson. Hey, sir, how are you?
Hey.
Yeah, if you'll approach, you'll have three minutes. Thank you for being with us this afternoon.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm one of the five residents who lives on Bruton Road. I don't know if any of you have ever been down the road. You probably would have only gotten there if you mistakenly turned down this road. But there's only three houses with driveways on Bruton Road. There's only two addresses on the road, and so I can only speak for the five people who live there, but there are hundreds of people that use Bruton Road as a walkway, as a passage in our neighborhood. People walk their dogs, they walk with their children. There's some classes from, I assume it's the local elementary school, that use it to run laps back and forth. I'm not even sure what they're doing, but it's sort of cool. My home has a kitchen, and the sink overlooks the gravel road, and so it's at eye level, and I see these people all the time. I see older people who are out there trying to get in shape. I see younger people who are just out for a stroll. It's not just a road. It's actually just a passageway in our neighborhood, and the number of people far outweigh the number of cars that come down the road. I'm afraid if it is paved, what will happen is it'll no longer be able to be used the way it has been, which is more of a pathway than a road, and cars will go up and down it a lot faster, and I'm afraid it'll become unsafe for those people. I really don't know. After looking at the agenda, I don't know if it's technically feasible to pull Bruton Road out of the collection of roads. I'm not opposed to paving the gravel roads of Durham. I know there's a lot of good reasons to do it. I'm only speaking of this one specific road. I feel like paving Bruton Road is not in the best interest of the citizens of Durham, and it's not a benefit to the neighborhood surrounding Bruton Road. So, that was the only thing I had.
Thank you so much for being with us today.
Okay.
Appreciate your comments. Absolutely. Colleagues, anyone wanted to?
Where is it located again?
It's right off Anderson Street. It's sort of between.
By Duke?
It's close to Duke. It's three quarters of a mile.
Okay.
From Duke, and it's between Anderson and more or less Academy, sort of. It doesn't go all the way through.
I know who you're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Go on.
All right, colleagues, that was item number 12. We'll move now to item number 13, which was pulled by Councilmember Cook.
My name is Antoine Williams with the Environmental and Street Services Department, here to answer questions on item number 13.
Thank you. So, this is maintenance, as I read it, that we normally have done in-house, and the memo actually addressed a little bit about why we are moving to contracting on this. It talks about new staff roles and responsibilities, and I was just hoping you could elaborate on what those are and sort of why we've moved to this particular work being contractor work as opposed to in-house.
Sure. So, a lot of the SEMs that are maintained by our Stormwater Street Maintenance Department, they've done a great job over the years doing that. A lot of these devices are specialty devices where it's not something that's typically considered routine stormwater maintenance operations. And along with the staffing needs down within the Stormwater Maintenance Division, the need was seen to move to contracting this work out so that we could get it done in a more timely fashion. Also, taking into consideration the specialty work with maintaining some of these devices were the reasons to move towards contracting the work out.
So, will Dragonfly do all 40 of the stormwater control measures?
Dragonfly will do all 40, yes.
Okay. And how much of that is currently being done by staff? All of it?
Yes, that was 40, yes.
All 40? Okay. And what are the other kind of things that will fill that time and energy? I'm just curious, like what we're diverting staff time to?
So, you mean what will staff do now that they're not responsible for maintaining these devices?
Well, it sounds like it was taking up kind of a lot of time, and you were talking about timeliness, and it sounds like we'll be able to have a contractor would do these things more quickly. There'll be more, there was like kind of a specialization.
Right.
So, it sounds like it was probably taking up quite a bit of our in-house time. So, I'm just curious about the restructuring there.
I think a lot of the time was just due to, I would say, lack of staff to be able to perform the work.
I see.
So, now we have this contract in place where we can, these devices have to have routine maintenance each year, so we'll have this contract in place to be able to provide those reports that are due to continue to maintain the city's stormwater permit for keeping those devices operational.
Cool. Okay, that makes sense to me. And this was, this RFP was put out twice, is that right?
That's right.
Was there any change between the first and the second outside of that we got more responses in the second one? Or no, we got the same number of responses in the second one, if I remember correctly?
We did get the same number. We got two responses on the first, so the reason it was put back out is because those responses were considered, they weren't completely responsive. So, there was some information we asked for within those RFPs that we didn't get from the different contractors. So, we re-advertised, we added some additional information to try to clarify what the contract was intended to be for, and with that second advertisement, the submissions came back complete, and we were able to make an award based on that.
Awesome. Okay, that all makes sense. Thank you so much. Those are my questions.
Thank you, councilmember. Colleagues, anyone else on item 13? All right, then we'll move on to item number 15, which was pulled by Councilmember Freeman. I'll yield.
Thank you. Just a question mainly around the naming of the project. I understand that there was an update for the location, something around the villages of Hayti.
Yes.
And I just wanted to know if it would be possible to make sure that that's updated, because it shouldn't be called a failed project, a failed private project. It was actually homes to people who lived on Fayetteville Street, and so if it were referred to as Fayetteville Street Apartments or the new name, it would be a whole lot better going forward to leave the Fayetteville Place behind.
Understood. Matt Walker, Housing and Neighborhood Services.
I'm only one person now. I'm just offering an opinion.
Understood. You got a question, councilmember?
I just wanted to know if you were aware of the update of the name of the location.
The villages at Hayti? Yes.
And is there a reason why you're not using that name for the project? Because it says it will go forward as Fayetteville Place.
I understand. I think, and Mr. Snell from the Housing Authority should be on the line, the name was recently updated, I believe, and he can clarify, that because of how this resolution is worded, it's worded as Fayetteville.
Say it again. It's worded as Fayetteville?
Yes. Fayetteville, Phase One.
Fayetteville.
Fayette Place. I'm sorry. Fayette Place, Phase One.
Okay. And so what will it take for it to not be worded as Fayette Place, Phase One? Because we're going to hope that the Fayette Place doesn't continue into this.
Director Snell, I believe.
Is he on the line?
Yeah, we'll allow Director Snell to. Mr. Director, can you hear me? Good afternoon, sir. Did you hear the question?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. There is no technical reason for Fayette Place to continue as the name for this project. That was the initial name that was utilized for all of the planning purposes and submitting the applications before we had gotten the approval and gone through the branding process with our community advisory group. That happened probably about 45 days ago where we settled on the new branding. I think in some references already with the city, we made the city, well, we made Mr. Walker and his staff avail, we made it known to them the branding for the project, and so for the record, it is the villages at Hayti, and we will make that reference in all documents going forward.
Thank you. I just want to know if that's okay for your office to also update as well?
It is. It is. You can imagine we have a slash now, so.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Councilmembers, is that it? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item 16, which was pulled by our member of the public, Chris Pearlstein, if you're here. Good afternoon, sir. You'll have three minutes.
There we go. I should actually know this right from all the BPAC meetings. So, I'm going to assume that every single one of you guys is going to support the rail trail, but I wanted to talk about some aspects of why, kind of annoyed a little bit or frustrated, I guess, how we talk about this sometimes, and I was going to apologize to Councilmember Rist because he's heard this rant quite a bit at BPAC meetings, but apparently he maybe caught wind of this and decided just not to even show up for it, so you might want to take his example next time. So, to start off with, this is listed under a Parks and Recreation Department thing, and they're great. This has nothing to do with them doing anything wrong, but it sort of sets a tone about how we view these trails, right? We view them as recreation, and you've probably heard me talk about it before, but I don't have a car, and I do this by choice. And so, for me, when I use the American Tobacco Trail, for example, it is transportation. I do have fun biking on it. I do have fun biking on it, but I'm doing it to go visit family members. I'm doing it to go shopping, to get my groceries, to go to BPAC meetings. And so what I hope we can start doing is thinking about this from that perspective. It's not just for fun, it's also a transportation option, a low-cost transportation option that doesn't involve being required to use a car. So, you know, I sit there and I look at the cost of a bike versus a car. And if you've seen me around town, you've probably seen that I have this ridiculously large cargo e-bike, right? And that lets me go to Lowe's, pick up some lumber, do all kinds of crazy things. It's a little bit of a homebrew thing, but if you look at a retail cost of that bike brand-new, $6,000. It's a lot of money for a bicycle, right? But if you go look at the average cost today of a used car, it's $25,000, right? So this is 1/20th of that, and that's before you even talk about registration, insurance, license, all that kind of thing. So this is the affordable option, and transportation makes up 20% of household costs. And so the greenway is actually sort of like your affordable housing, right? This isn't something that's gentrification or displacement. It actually fights those things. It gives people an option to cut those expenses and make that lifestyle more affordable. So I really support this, and I hope you'll think about it in those ways. And if you look at where this greenway is going to go, it's actually going to go by several schools, it's going to go by the Bragtown Library, it goes by a lot of publicly-owned properties. There's Durham Housing Authority properties here, there's city-owned properties, there's county-owned properties, and there's even federal properties owned here, right? And so we can build this while also giving access to folks by putting affordable housing in these places. So I think this represents a great opportunity to actually fight displacement, to fight gentrification, to provide us all with a safer option to move around. Thank you.
Chris, thank you so much for being with us. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. I really appreciate those comments. And I would just add that it also is a route that'll be available for folks traveling to and from Person County, so it's about eight miles into Person County. It spans about 18 miles, which is pretty large, and I do agree that it should include some transportation aspect of planning around it. And so I'm hoping that transportation staff is coordinating with Parks and Rec as well.
Thank you much. Colleagues, anyone else? All right, we'll move on to item number 17, which was pulled by Councilmember Baker on yield.
Thank you. Yeah, so this is, currently we use LDO, Land Development Office, for this technology. The staff report says that recently support has degraded significantly to ensure the city of Durham can continue to manage its development activity effectively. A new permitting and application system is necessary, a new system is CLARITY. Can you just talk a little bit about the degradation of the service quality under the existing contract that we have? Any changes in cost between LDO and CLARITY? And then also if there are any annual costs associated with this?
I definitely will. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. So what we're looking at is the current technology that we currently have in place to support the LDO is a tool that was here probably maybe 15-plus years ago. It's long passage, it's life of expectancy, and it is a system that can no longer, we can't really do any type of updates to it. So there is a lot of new data that you used to take in previously that is not done. We recently encountered an issue, a footnote to us at the time, where the county's tax office upgraded one of their systems, they needed to change the schema. And what that means is like the columns of all the data that comes over was changed, and it was different from what we were currently using. So that took a lot of effort to be able to rework things so that the information that was previously able to be pulled could be accessed by staff. And that's something that we're still dealing with now. So that system, it is completely customized and proprietary system that we can't make any updates to. The ownership has passed maybe four, five, or six different companies just over the last 10 to 12 years. So we can't really do anything else to that. The goal is to move to this new system. CLARITY is the name of the solution. It's actually built on a Salesforce platform. So a lot of municipalities and counties across the country also use it as a 3-1-1 system because of the integration capabilities. So we'll be using it for inspections, planning, code enforcement, and this is also a city-county tool. And luckily, the tech surcharge fund that we currently have budget for is what's essentially paying for this. So this is the fees that we charge to actually be able to pay for this system. So in a sense, it's paying for itself, and it's doing what it's supposed to do. I want to say that the contract, while it's listed as around $4.8 million, I want to say it's around $2, $2.5 million to actually implement it. And that recurring cost for those licenses throughout that five years brings you to roughly around maybe $4.3, $4.4 million. Then you're going to, of course, have some additional costs that may be for the project management and other support. So that's how we get to that five-year contract amount.
Okay, that's great. And is this more expensive, less expensive than the current system? Are we paying more for something that's providing a better service?
Yeah. So currently, the only thing that we're paying, because again, this system is so old, it's on-prem, we own it, right? We pay an annual support cost, which is like $49,000 a year, $49,999 a year. And really, the vendor still offers limited support. Like if something breaks, they'll try to help if they can, they'll have like maybe one or two dedicated staff to that, but that's basically it. I mean, in our weekly, in our maintenance plans, we recently made sure that we got a change to reboot the system at least on a weekly basis, at least, just to try to alleviate some of the stress from some of our operation departments that utilize that system. Sometimes things get tied up. So operationally, it's definitely needed.
Okay, great. And the county already uses this, or are they also transitioning with us?
They are transitioning with us. We, so, and I'd like to add some clarity to this, and I know our departments have changed a little, so excuse me if I'm not exactly correct, but it used to be city-county inspections, which is building, safety, planning. We have the TSGIS, which is city-county funded, which sits within TS. But we're all co-funding these departments and these divisions and these services. So it's all jointly owned. For the most part, we've been in charge of the ownership and the management of it, but they have a lot of their data that comes from like the tax parcels that comes into the system.
All right, thank you. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, anyone else on this item? All right, then we'll move on to item number 18, which was pulled by Councilmember Freeman on yield.
Just a note, I, hold on.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of council, Sean Egan for the Department of Transportation.
Thank you, and I love the tie.
Thank you.
I just wanted to just make sure that we were speaking to some of the time signaling in relation to people with disabilities and making sure, because I noticed there are a couple of lights around downtown that are a little quick. And making sure that whomever the contractor is, is also building, if you're building into your plan, the conversation around people with disabilities, then it'll end up in the work. And so I didn't see that in here, and I just wanted to point that out.
So that's definitely a major priority for us. Some of the steps that we've been taking to address the needs of people with disabilities, particularly pedestrians with disabilities, is to add what's called a leading pedestrian interval. So when the traffic signal is red for the cars, before it turns green for the cars, it'll turn green for the pedestrians. It gives them a chance to get out into the intersection before cars start turning across that intersection. And it increases the amount of crossing time that people have because different folks move at different speeds, especially if they're using a mobility device. They'll be moving across that crosswalk at a slower pace. So that leading pedestrian interval gives them an advantage at the outset, and then gives them more time overall to get across the street. And then one of the other initiatives that we're working on is to have audible pedestrian signals at our traffic signals. So you've probably heard it here at City Hall Plaza, where it beeps and it tells you that you shouldn't walk, or, and then now it's safe to cross Mangum Street here at City Hall Plaza. So as we make traffic signal improvements, we're making sure to add those leading pedestrian intervals when we're reprogramming a traffic signal, a pedestrian signal. And then we're also, we have a parallel program and effort to make sure that we're adding those audible pedestrian signals.
And these will go beyond downtown, right?
Yes, so we have them all over the city, but we continue to work as we add more traffic signals to get as many signals as possible equipped with both the leading pedestrian interval and the audible pedestrian signal.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, anyone else on this item? All right, then, moving right along, we'll move to item number 20, which was pulled by Councilmember Baker on yield.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, Don Greeley, Water Management.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming. So I just wanted to pull this one. The staff report talks about needed upgrades to meet future capacity requirements and to bring the lift stations into compliance with the current city standards, so sort of growth management question and also maintenance question. So I just wanted to ask specifically about this one. Is this associated with, what kind of anticipated growth are we looking at here when it comes to this particular lift station? What are the factors that went into deciding if there was going to be anticipated growth in this area? And are there particular geographic areas that would be served or could be served by the lift station? So if we said we're going to contract and upgrade this lift station, does that expand the area that can be developed in the future?
Okay, I'll try to handle those one at a time. The biggest reason, the driver for this project was the actual existing station itself. It had degraded over time. The wet well itself was in poor condition. The configuration within the dry well, which is where the pumps and the motors are, were at the end of their useful life. So we were going to be looking at replacing all of them. We also evaluated whether the existing style of lift station is appropriate, or is there a better style of lift stations that we've kind of moved to, which is easier to maintain? So that was the big drivers, so to do the work. Whenever we do the work, we look at, do we replace what's back, or do we have an opportunity when we're doing the work to look at future needs? So that got folded into the project, to be able to look at the whole geographic area. We have a new, you know, comp plan. So we took that into consideration, into the design work of the new pumps and motors and electrical systems. It doesn't increase the area that's currently served or intended to serve by this lift station, but as I said, the underlying driver was the fact that the existing station was in poor condition.
Okay, that's helpful. Okay, so the driver was maintenance and improving the degraded quality of the existing lift station? And then looking at the comprehensive plan and aligning the capacity of the lift station to expectations in the comprehensive plan?
Right. And currently, that area doesn't see a lot of development at this time, but, you know, that can shift at any given moment, so.
Would you say that following this work, that there would be, I mean, there would be increased capacity for development in that area, correct?
There was existing capacity already at the station, so that wasn't holding any development back. This just ensures that there is that capacity going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Cook.
Thank you. I actually had more questions about the RFP process. So I saw this one, like one that we were just talking about, had a secondary RFP process because there were only two respondents in the first one. Did y'all change things between the first and second?
We did not. To open the initial time, we need three bidders. And since we didn't get the three bidders, we had to re-advertise.
And it was the same timeframe, and we just got double the amount the second time?
A lot of it's timing because of what other work is going on in the area.
Oh, I see.
If they're competing for this one project that may be more lucrative to the pool of contractors. And that bid was taken in and awarded, so now they realize they're not going to get that work. So now they say, oh, we have the capacity. So we're seeing that pretty consistently, where if we have, we have to go back out for bids because we didn't have enough bids. The second time, we could get just the one, or we could get multiple ones. It's timing with the other work going on in the area and the contractors.
Interesting. Okay, I'm going to log that for the future, but that is fascinating. Just in this.
As a side note, for our very large projects, we reach out to our neighboring communities to understand what really large projects are. Our project potentially would be competing against.
Right.
And we are in constant communication with each other because.
We don't want to flood the market with.
We don't want to flood the market, and everybody might go after one project, and everybody else is high and dry, so.
Gotcha.
We're doing that on a regular basis.
That makes sense to me. I saw that the lowest bidder did not meet our standards, wasn't able to show good faith effort. So we went to the second highest bidder. Do we do the full kind of scheme of understanding if they can meet this good faith?
Yes.
Before we move on to look at the next highest bidder?
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense to you. And then can you just talk a little bit more about like what is included in that good faith exemption and what was attractive about Harper General?
That is, the good faith assessment is done by the Finance Department. I see Tim, and I don't know if he can, putting him on the spot, because I know his staff that does that is not here today, so. But he might be able to send some insight, and we can maybe provide some background information if.
And it maybe doesn't need to be specific to this one, but I am curious, like what we're looking for there and what things are, what we're asking for these contractors to show.
Ten-floor Finance Department. And so that is a very good question, and so I don't get it wrong. I would, I can get you that information. I will, we'll get that information on the overall process and how we work it.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. Thanks.
Councilmember, Mr. Mayor, did you have a?
Yeah, I, so do we have any indicators that there will be more intentions for growth? Do we know if any property owners are expecting to potentially sell land or build out there? And I'm asking because.
In this specific area?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not aware of any current development plans that are in.
And I guess I'm asking if we looked at that, or we're just only looking at the, just to mention as an indicator to spend what we're spending, if we're going to go down there, you know, I just prefer not to have to go back and expand.
Right.
Because all of a sudden neighbors, you know, as we all know, admittedly or not, development starts as a private enterprise. And whenever we're talking lift stations, memories get short. Before I was here, someone talked about a lift station in southeast Durham, and now it's a surprise to so many people that there's development. I don't want to deal with the same thing here in this area.
Right.
I don't want it to be an intentional surprise or, you know, a later claimed surprise. But we're talking about a lift station for the sake of capacity, and this is being replaced or because of maintenance.
Correct.
So I'm assuming that it's going to handle the same capacity that we currently have.
It's going to handle the capacity we currently have, plus what the current land use with the current comprehensive plan indicates for that area.
Right. Okay. I wanted to ask that question on the record, because if I ever need to go back and pull this day, there's a bunch of development that starts happening out there, and this lift station is going to be brand-new, and people start seeing that as a value add. I don't want them coming to City Council saying, you're doing X, Y, Z because of, you know, I don't know. I'm just trying to clarify the whole development conversation.
Right.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Colleagues, anyone else on this item? All right, then, we'll move to our last pulled item, which is item number 25, and we do have a speaker, a neighbor who wants to speak, Raina Rusenko. Good afternoon, thank you for being with us. You'll have three minutes.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Raina Rusenko. I'm a resident and a member of the Have a Heart Coalition. I'm here to record my concern regarding Durham's plans to procure a peregrine operations management platform. I reviewed the city's IT governance business case for its real-time crime center as this details some of peregrine's role in the supporting documents for this agenda item. Considering the potential impact on the civil rights of every person in Durham, and especially our rights to privacy, I think it is alarming that the public is not being actively informed and consulted regarding the adoption of these systems. The business case argues that the RTCC, which includes peregrine adoption, will make Durham a safer community and an innovative and high-performance organization. I'd like to share some of why these claims won't hold true. As Exhibit A shows, the Peregrine platform will consolidate data from police reports, body cameras, digital evidence, ALPRs, call records, mobile pings, and social media. These multiple sources will detail where people are in real time, what they share on social media, and any past and present interactions with law enforcement, the latter of which disproportionately negatively impacts Black, Brown, and Poor people. It enables DBD and all law enforcement agencies looped into the system to track, record, and profile members of the public in real time, throwing any auspices of a right to privacy in the trash. The public is given no opportunity to consent to such use of our data. And because this data can and will be shared across agencies, including by federal agencies such as ICE, adoption of these management systems invite horrors we have not yet conceived of. In other words, this integration of data systems and the platform for data sharing does not create a safer community, especially considering the rising authoritarianism of our time. Cities across the country are rejecting mass surveillance and mass data extracting companies for these reasons. Just this year, Charlottesville rejected Peregrine, Denver and Austin rejected Flock, and Nashville rejected FUSIS. Decades of science have already shown us that the best way to reduce crime is to invest in people. Policing and especially policing enhanced by tech is not the answer. Spending public funds on tech for the purpose of surveilling every member of the public and dispatching law enforcement in response to every digital whisper of a crime while neglecting to invest in providing that same public with adequate food, education, housing, childcare, and other essentials is cruel, not innovative and high-performing. Durham should absolutely not hastily enter this Peregrine contract. Our city has already been on the right track as it has expanded heart programming, adopted the Fourth Amendment Workplace Resolution, and saw other ways to protect its public from unconstitutional and harmful law enforcement practices to ensure we can all safely engage in public life. Adopting the Peregrine platform would not only be a step backwards, but upend all the progress we've made so far. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us this afternoon. For the record, we do have two resource people on hand for this item as well today. If our resource folk want to respond, and then we'll open up to the council if there's a chief of U.A. Okay, awesome. If she has a response, or if you can stand by for questions?
Yep.
Did you want to respond?
Sure, I will. So I'll just start off. We do have resource staff here. And I also have some of my staff that were on the, our initial committee that we set up for Real-Time Crime Center. I think most importantly, what I really want to kind of make known is that this software actually is not going to be bringing in anything we are not currently using in our investigations. So Peregrine is, I think of it like a house, so your foundation. And then you put everything into the house to build it. Or Google. So Peregrine is like our Google. Google is not by alone its own engine, right? You have to pour into it. And so what we're pouring into it is data that we currently maintain, but it's in a disjointed way. So if an investigator is on scene at a crime, that investigator will have to do canvassing, then we'll have to go back to the office, we'll have to consult with our intel staff, our crime analysis staff, we'll have to look through field contacts and information, which can take quite a while, especially when you're looking at investigating violent crime. And then we'll have to self-isolate all of those data points versus being able to through the real time. Crime Center utilizing Peregrine will be able to input information specifically for that crime that he or she or they are investigating for. This is not software that anyone can just come in and just wantonly Google anyone, right? Or wantonly look up anyone. It is Peregrine, and all of our software is guided by CGIS requirements. There is a strict audit trail of who is using and who is accessing. It is also not blatantly or open to outside entities to come in and access our data. There has to be, like it is now, full CGIS compliance. And those individuals that want to access data would have to be from law enforcement agencies, would have to show and verify that they actually are working an active criminal case and tie it into one of our cases. So there has to be a relation. Again, this is what we currently do. This just allows us to do it quicker. It allows us to have case resolutions faster and apprehend and identify named suspects a little bit quicker than what we are currently doing it. So I'll just say we do have a representative from Peregrine, I think that's also online, because I'm not great with names. Phil Castronova is online, and I have staff here. So you all know Mr. Jason Shees, he is here as well, as well as T.S. Staff.
Chief made this point, but I'd just like to emphasize it. There are no new investigative tools, no new surveillance tools associated with this. This is a platform that searches data that the Durham Police Department already has. It does not enhance surveillance or collect broadly information that the police department does not already collect. This is not a sweeping tool of any type. This is a tool that works from the evidence and/or the data that the department already collects. It just makes our human investigators, gives them better and more timely access to the information we already have.
And I do just want to add, we are, we understand and hear the community's concerns, which is why we work so very hard to ensuring that everything that we bring onboard as investigative tools are not going to be abused, not going to be misused, and certainly not going to be used to victimize our residents.
Thank you, Chief and Mr. Manager. Councilmember Baker, I think you had wanted to chime in, then Councilmember Cabirro.
Yeah, thank you. I was gonna ask just kind of for the high-level background that you just gave us, and I appreciate that. I do, I did get a flood of messages specifically regarding this technology and also the company itself. I'm wondering if it's time-sensitive, if there's a possibility of having some sort of town hall or an opportunity for a back-and-forth with concerned residents to answer questions. I don't want to be alarmist about something that I don't fully understand at this point, but I also want to give space for people who have concerns, including concerns that may very well be legitimate. And so I wonder if you'd be open to something like that?
Of course, definitely. As in fact, today, the timing is actually, works really well. I have got a meeting in the park today with Durham Beyond Policing. And so we'll kind of start working through that and peeling back some layers and happy to answer questions, whatever those questions might be. And I've always said, if I don't know the answer, I know somebody that knows the answer. So I definitely want to be able to facilitate that, so more than happy to.
And is that a meeting that is open? Or are you suggesting that you're open to those kinds of meetings?
I am open to those kinds of meetings, and certainly today at, you know, four o'clock, happy to everyone. It's at Hillside Park today.
Okay.
Could I ask, Chief, and I think you're basically offering this, but to clarify, will you specifically bring up at this meeting the Peregrine software? Give them an opportunity in Durham Beyond Policing to ask whatever questions they may have about it and how it's used? So that, just to verify for Councilmember Baker, that you will proactively discuss that with Durham Beyond Policing today when you meet?
Yes, we will.
I would also just suggest, maybe we can add another meeting, maybe something next week. I think 4:00 PM today, you know, in two hours would be short notice for the broader public.
Of course.
So if it's possible to put another meeting out next week, sometime later, maybe in the latter part of the week?
Of course, yeah. And we can do several. I mean, so it just doesn't have to be one, so we can do several at different times throughout the day. And we can pull that together and just provide just some dates. And if you can join, that's fine. If you can't, that's, you know, we'll try and accommodate as many people as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Cabirro.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm gonna ask, I mean, certainly this needs to be placed on GBA, but I'm gonna actually ask for an additional cycle. I would also like police officials to meet with immigration attorneys. I want to understand the intersection with federal enforcement. I understand what you're saying. Right, I'm not worried about RPD. I'm rarely worried about RPD. I'm worried about everybody else. And so I really need to understand that intersection very, very clearly. And I need to have that intersection with the folks who are in the courtrooms, figuring out what they're seeing and how this data is being used. And I don't think that now to November 3rd is gonna, or whatever, is gonna give us the opportunity to really have this conversation in the public. I would like staff to send me more information on who the owner is. I would also like to have the resource person, I would like to have a better understanding of what they, how are they interacting with AI? I got a lot, so I'm gonna be following up. And I'm not going to be, at this point, I don't think that we can get it done between now and November. So, I think it's November 3rd, is that our first? Yeah, so I just want to flag that for staff. I have, I've sat in, I'm one of the, like, I've sat in a lot of the tech conversations across the country with local electeds in these communities that are being raised who have turned these kinds of contracts down from license plate readers. Not because I, again, I think that I trust our law enforcement to follow the law, to do what's right, to protect people's civil rights right now. I don't trust others, and I don't, we can be preempted at any time, both at the state and the federal level. Thank you.
Councilmember Cook.
I was actually gonna ask for the exact same thing, so I would just want to echo everything that my colleague has said. I also have a whole list of questions and do not think that I will have time to get them. I was worried about some of the things that Councilmember Cabirro has stated. I'm also concerned about, in this time of like over litigation, what the policies are. Like, I understand that we're not adding anything new, but what we are doing is accumulating all of our things into a third-party house, as you called it. But what are their policies when they get into litigation? Are they turning over everything? Opposing parties come straight to the city? These are all policies that companies have developed, and I, without seeing these, have a really hard time having faith in this. Also, I know there's like some opt-in and opt-out options for some of these things, so I'd like to have more clarity around what those are. And there seem to be Palantir ties. And then I think the other piece of this that feels particularly harmful in this moment is that we are like in weird times as a city government because we are trying to maintain in a way that like supports values and protects the citizens of the city against a federal government that does not share our values in that regard. And so when we have people coming to us with concerns and we're addressing those concerns in a belittling or patronizing way, which I know a lot of people came and were concerned about Palantir, yes, this is not Palantir, but yes, there is overlap, and that was known and should have been known. And so it feels like we are, we're not doing a good job of harboring trust around this. And so I feel like it's already sort of gotten off on a bad foot. And so for me, I want to extend that time, want to make sure that people have a chance to have their voices heard and that we get the information that we need as well.
Can I just add, if it, the Palantir connection, none of my staff knew about Palantir until it popped up on Reddit. And I worked very hard to try and correct the disinformation that was out there about the Durham Police Department having those kinds of meetings with Palantir, which is, you know, it is, which also what led to, you know, what's gonna happen today is a meeting with Durham Beyond Policing is to further have that conversation. But certainly, we are not and would never try and do a bait and switch. And I think we've proven that, and I just want you all to know that we would not. We do have the contract, there are certain clauses within the contract. But certainly, and I know y'all have got a lot of stuff on your plate today. Like I said, I do have the Peregrine rep on the line also. And if you'd like, we could probably avail the rep to, we could probably avail the rep as well on these meetings. Would that help?
Yeah, and I just want to say that I, like my councilmember, have full faith in your office. This is not a concern of y'all. And I don't think that it was an intentional bait and switch or anything like that. But I'm just saying that I feel like we're already sort of starting off on the wrong foot with this. And so I want to be really diligent about how we respond. And I think the rep being on in the world, I always gesture to the ceiling like that they're in the ceiling, okay. That them being on, they're hearing our requests, and I'd like to have responses in writing to those so that they're accessible to the public and we can share them.
Will do. Thank you.
Want to chime in?
Would love for councilmembers, first of all, I did want to make clear, we do have folks available today for people who had questions today. Definitely hear the request for this to come back and so prepared to do that. It would be helpful. In addition, we will capture the questions we heard today, but I'd ask if council could, has specific questions you could send me. I'd like to make sure that any future agenda item on this is specifically responsive to any questions you have. So I'll ask, preferably in the next 48 hours or so, so we can be responsive. If you could generate a list of questions, we'll make sure that the vendor, the police department, Technology Solutions Department, and city leadership all have a chance to review and fully respond to those. And so I would suggest then that this item, rather than be settled on GBA, be referred back to staff, and we'll place it on a future agenda. But I also wanted to make clear, if you had questions today, we also have people who are available to answer questions today, and that's at your discretion.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'm gonna yield to Councilmember Freeman. I think I did, in fact, hear a councilmember ask for another cycle, so we'll address that. Councilmember Freeman, I yield.
Thank you. I appreciate Manager Ferguson's comment. I do want to associate myself with both Councilmember Cook and Cabirro's comments on the company. And especially just knowing, like, I don't think it's Durham-centric, the concern. But I do think that the data, and I'm just looking it up, the ties between Peregrine and Planetar. And it looks like they both started in 2003, but Peregrine seems to have some US securities issues. So I just, just...
That's a different company. Different name, different company. Just want to be clear.
Just want to make sure that, yeah, that the backside of this, anytime there's AI involved, I think that the additional questions around the opt-in, opt-out, and all that should be checkboxes.
I think it's clear we've crossed the threshold of council to put this off for another cycle. But I still want to, if there's any more questions specifically about the item. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cabirro, then, Your Honor.
I just, again, want our police, we all know where you are and what you stand for and where your police department is. And so I just want to lean in again, just for the public, that this is never, and I think that this is unanimous on this council, this is not aimed at you or the department. We know that you are just trying to do everything possible to help keep Durham safe. And I think many of us have been in enough other communities to see what bad policing looks like and what good policing looks like. And so I just want to emphasize that in this moment. And say, all of my questions are around the tech itself and the company and not police practice of the Durham PD. Thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, about a year ago, I would, I would sound very different. But after our current president and seeing the way Amazon and Meta and all of these companies just literally took a knee and bowed down to the king, I'm much more cautious. I'm glad to hear my colleagues ask for a town hall, because I think that's exactly what we do need. There has been a lot of disinformation. Just last week, thank you, Chief, for addressing the Reddit situation. I hate trying to govern a city based on Reddit. I was having dinner with former Mayor Bill Bell and his wife, Jim Gutman and his wife, and the folks who run D-PAC, Farad Ali and his wife, the folks who got D-PAC off the ground. And security came in and they said, you know, Mayor, there is about 15 people outside protesting. They think that you're having a private dinner with the owners of Palantir. And my exact response was, who the heck is Palantir? And just casually, folks are just lying. They're just putting information out there. And, you know, folks get worked up, and they came to protest the mayor having a secret dinner with Palantir. I didn't even know what Palantir was, so I had to look it up, you know. And then I realized that, you know, what I said to the manager this morning, I was like, you mean to tell me we have a security company that starts with the word P, start with the letter P? So it's extremely sensitive, so I want to make sure that we can engage. I also don't like, you know, being an elected official that has to take every decision back to a community meeting and make the decision there first and then come back here and make a decision. But I think there are some things where we make an exception. What I don't want to happen, I don't, and this is why I do want community meetings, I don't want a bunch of folks who don't experience the daily issues of crime talking about Black and Brown folks and what they need to do. talking about black and brown folks and what they need to do. So I believe in a community meeting, those black folks and those brown folks that are overly represented in the data of criminal offenses, their families, I would like to hear from those folks directly, rather than just a very engaged populace speaking on behalf of. That is really frustrating, because I, I, it's really hard for me to go to a parent and say, I, we just have to wait. We have to wait until this political will to do X, Y, Z. And so I appreciate us doing our due diligence, especially in this time. But I wanna make sure that we are sensitive to that. And it's really easy to talk for someone and not listen to the people who are experiencing this on a daily basis. There is a lot of misinformation. There's a lot of disinformation. Shame on the people who are doing that. It does not help our community. So this is a serious, it's a sensitive matter that I hope that we will, that I know unanimously we're taking very seriously. But one thing I won't stand for is, you know, the overspeak or overrepresented representation of folks. And the folks that are most impacted are not even at the table. A community meeting, thank you, Councilmember Baker, for proposing that first. That, this will give us that opportunity. And I'm also not gonna be an alarmist, but I think that the concern is very clear. Data is so easily, you know, viewed and snatched and used. Considering how, I mean, we're living in almost a lawless state right now. And so I think that we need to be very sensitive to that. From, you know, data being shared with immigration to, you know, folks just feeling comfortable. And I know, as we've stated, this is not a new technology that's gonna add new capabilities outside of what we're already doing. This is a matter of being able to quickly search the information that we already have in-house, rather than paying an investigator to go to each segment of the case or each component and then have to bring those things together. So I appreciate what it does. But I do think that it is important that we do our due diligence to make sure that we are considering past conversations as well, that we bring this in, bringing community in with it. So, I don't, Councilmember Freeman, another comment.
Sure.
Thank you. I do wanna say that I think that it raises an issue, or not really an issue, but a concern. And really going through, I guess, the TS side of policing, especially in light of AI, it would be great to see, like, what the police policy is on that, so that it is clear. I'm sure you have it already. And I think it's, I think it would be helpful to have that conversation more publicly.
Thank you. Colleagues, anyone else? All right, Mr. Manager, just for the sake of clarity, so this, this item will not appear on our November 3rd agenda for Monday. It will be carried over for another cycle.
Thank you.
Just, I'm sorry, just one.
Sure. Identify yourself, please.
This is Philip from Peregrin, that Chief had identified as the resource standing on standby.
All right.
I was just curious if I could say a few words just to mitigate some concerns or misconceptions about the company or the data, what we share, et cetera.
Yeah, please, please.
We've spent a lot of time already and happy to go into further discussions with the public or whoever needs to hear it. But just thought I'd clarify a few things if I could have a minute.
Sure, please proceed.
Awesome. So Peregrin is just a data integration company. As Chief said, we just take the information that the Durham Police Department has really difficult time searching and manually cross-referencing, like their CAD, RMS and evidence, bringing it all together and making connections. So that what typically takes an analyst, investigator, days or hours, they can now do seamlessly minutes and seconds to spend more time doing high-quality police work, engaging with the community and just be more operationally efficient, you know, for a department that is understaffed. And while I agree with the original lady who brought up the concern that people should, you know, be leading policing, the unfortunate fact is, there's not as many people today lining up to become law enforcement officers. And so this can certainly fill a gap. Peregrin was founded by a former Palantir employee. That employee has not worked at Palantir since 2016. So for almost a decade, there is no association with Palantir. We are not a partner. We do not work together. We do not share data with Palantir. And we do not work with ICE and Durham PD, nor any of our partners or law enforcement, whoever, would ever have their data shared with ICE or any other agency, whether state, local, federal, or any otherwise, unless there was explicit permission granted. So just wanna clarify those items that maybe are of greatest concern. We do not do any predictive policing. Happy to get into some of the, you know, specific use cases in which we leverage artificial intelligence for cleaning data, creating safety flags for patrol situational awareness, going into, you know, calls for service, maybe understanding that there's a hazardous material. You know, there's been violent situations that this addressed before. There have been, you know, there is a child maybe with a disability or a learning disability not to, you know, go in too violently or, you know, barge down a door. So it's just using data in a way that helps the department make better data-driven decisions and overall creates operational efficiencies. So happy to go more into any conversations, but just wanna throw that out there.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Mayor, you.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm conscious about the cycles. I know we asked for an additional cycle. I don't wanna rush it. If it, we don't know what folks' schedules are. I'd like some churches and organizations to be able to like grab this information and be a part of it. I would like to go ahead and get it through as soon as possible if, you know, because I know it's a resource you could desperately use. But I do think that we need to make sure as many voices are at the table as possible. So if we can get it done within the next cycle by, what, what is it? Mid-November or December, whenever, that's fine, that's great. I just don't wanna set a hard line and not enough people have been engaged. Let's just say we can just do three roundtables or, I mean, three community gatherings at least, that would be great. But I can, I can help pull some folks together as well. Yeah.
So, if I may, I, while I have some ideas of places to meet, I wanna make sure that we're meeting people where it's easily accessible for them, whether they're biking, walking, what, you know, what have you. So if, if you have location, I know what I'm thinking, right? But if there's certain locations, it's easier for more people to meet, then I wanna be able to facilitate those meetings at those locations. So I just wanna throw that out there. If you'll just let me know.
Thanks for that, Chief.
Okay. Well, Mr. Manager is going to work with you on, working with the folks, staff to get that set up. I just don't wanna rush it. And I, I appreciate this, this idea of engagement. I think it's really important, because I'm, I made the mistake of looking online right now and I'm like, oh, my God, it's total off-base. So rightful concern, but I just wanna make sure that we're able to have an honest conversation around it. Or have a conversation so there can be honest, you know, feedback about it. Thank you.
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor. There is a speaker online who would like to address this item.
Did he register for?
He registered. It's Mr. Owen Webster. He's on the list.
Okay.
Oh, I thought he was a resource. Okay, that's fine.
Yep, go ahead. That's Owen Webster. Yeah, sorry, Owen.
Hey, I'm sorry about that.
No, you're good.
Figuring the microphone and everything.
You're good. Welcome. You got three minutes.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So obviously, there's been a lot of people. Oh, first of all, I'm a resident of Durham, have been for like six, seven years now. I'm a PhD candidate in nuclear engineering at NC State University. What I was most concerned about was, of course, this issue. I, you know, I'll be the first to admit, this is the, I heard about this very recently. This is not something I've been following for a long time. But, you know, in the past few days, I've been reading it fairly extensive, reading about it as much as I can. I think that, you know, I think, I think that, I wanna address a few main arguments. I think the original speaker handled a lot of it. But one of these arguments is this idea that, oh, we're not adding any new capabilities, which, you know, I think is a valid thing and it's reassuring to hear. But, but the fact is, what you're, what you're doing is you're allowing a computer system to be integrated into deciding which of the existing capabilities, you know, are applied and, and, you know, what things are brought together. And I think that anybody who's read about the sort of AI issue, or in my case, teaches students, understands that people that use AI frequently in their work are, you know, the studies Microsoft, MIT, Harvard have done, they cognitively offload, they, over time, they gradually become trusting of the AI and less trusting of their own internal judgment. You know, there's, there's people who advocate for RTCC systems. They talk about it like it's this, for example, Eric Levin, Communications Director for the National RTCC Association. He talks about it like it's this scalpel that avoids stopping innocent people trying to live their lives and that it, quote, "We aren't catching the wrong people anymore." To ever, for anyone who is associated with these things, to believe that sincerely, that there cannot be false positives, it's very concerning. Just from a cost standpoint, you would want to avoid this. I mean, there's been instances where, for example, in Aurora, Colorado, there was a woman and her, I believe, six or seven-year-old child that were held at gunpoint because of a system similar to this, concluding that they were driving a stolen vehicle. The city ended up paying a $1.9 million settlement as a result. So, you know, that's four years of this contract, if it goes wrong even once potentially. And, you know, there's just plenty of reason why I don't really trust the whole. I think it's very dismissive to say that, oh, it's not Palantir. You know, you, you thought that it was Palantir because it starts with a P. I think that's very much a straw man. The fact of the matter is, the CEO that founded this company was a former Palantir executive. He worked at Palantir, according to his LinkedIn, until 2017.
Thank you so much.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
No, you're welcome. Thank you. Good points as well. Thanks for chiming in. And the original speaker, who's in person. What was your name again?
Right now.
Right now, okay. All right. You could email me your remarks. I wanted to, yeah, thank you. Go ahead.
Colleagues, anyone else?
I would just echo the comments. I don't, I don't know how much of the techs, I have a little bit of a tech background. And so the folks who worked at what was, you know, MapQuest to, you know, to Hotmail, like all of those incremental changes, those folks take that same coding and systems work with them. And so everything, it all can talk to each other. And so it's, yeah, this is just very troubling. But I, I just wanna make sure that we're not like simply just looking at this one software system. It is every system that we're using. And so it's not specific to the police department. It's specific to all of our technical solutions. And, yeah, that's mainly the thing, is that this is not limited. And, yeah, I don't want us to just harp on surveillance is happening right here with my phone. And what does that look like? And how are we putting in place policy that will make sure that we're cognitive of what's happening? Because that is so readily available.
And I just wanna appreciate that point. I, I, I'm advocating for broader community engagement, because I do think that, you know, some solutions are necessary. To not do anything and pretend that there won't be any surveillance is just disingenuous. So I appreciate Councilmember Freeman's point. But also if more, you know, if we're able to, you know, be able to look at this information and make sure that, you know, again, as stated, we're not worried about our police department. But, you know, we could, you know, put that transparency out there and everyone knows what it is, you know, great. But doing nothing is just not an option. I don't know how you tell a parent whose child was just shot and they're waiting on an investigation to be closed, that, well, we didn't wanna over-police you. You know, like, it's, it's not really about over-policing. It's about this technology doing what we say it does, but also doing our due diligence to ensure that it's also not abusing, abusing even our police department's use. Just like when ShotSpotter came in, you didn't take ShotSpotter as stock. You literally changed the whole company, which inspired them to change their name. So I appreciate your leadership in that. And I'm expecting the same thing here. So I think the concerns that I've heard from the original speaker, as well as Mr. Owen online, are very valid. And I think that's why we need to have those community conversations to make sure that folks understand what it is, you know? But I also don't think we're running from AI and surveillance, because it's just too, it's too many places. And I'm not, we're not saying that we're trying to like prevent AI in the city, but we wanna make sure that folks know exactly what we get ourselves into. So thank you. All right. We have two hours or the strategic plans. I'm gonna stop talking.
All right. Thank you, colleagues. Chief, good to see you. Always, thank you so much. All right. Colleagues, our first presentation is a 2024 General Obligation Bond Referendum Project's Progress Update Presentation, which is slated to go 20 minutes. We'll hear this presentation and I reckon then maybe a seven to 10-minute break. Then we'll go into the two hours.
I don't feel like you have to take the whole 20 minutes, you know? Councilmembers are getting really excited about this. So, yep, it's gonna be the whole 20.
Good afternoon, everybody. Tasha Johnson, Environmental and Street Services. And I will be presenting today also with Wade Walcutt with DPR, somewhere nearby.
He's cheering in the back.
Working behind the scenes to help bring this all together. Stacy Poston with General Services. So we are here to present for you an update of the projects funded by the 2024 Bond Referendum. Okay. So just to recap how we got here. In November of 2024, the city put forth two bond initiatives for the voters and they were approved with convincing support. The referendums totaled $200 million. The first one was 115, um, 115 million for streets and sidewalk projects, as you see outlined here, sidewalk repairs, new sidewalk construction, street paving and unpaved roads program. The additional 85 billion went towards parks and recreation for several projects. The projects that were funded were considered to be shovel-ready at the time. And the thought process was that spending money now would help us save money in the future. Over the years, we've seen significant increases in costs associated with these scopes of work. And so by advancing the money now to accelerate delivery of these projects, the plan is to save money on those projects to deliver them faster and therefore having more money available in the future. As I go through my slides, I do not have vicinity maps for the specific projects, but maps are available on the bond webpage. And also each of these projects has its own individual webpage. I would like to pause right here first and recognize additional staff in the room. We have staff, of course, from Environmental and Street Services, as well as DPR, General Services and Transportation, all working behind the scenes to bring these projects forward. We also have Tim Flora, ever-present when there's a bond conversation going on, available as well. Staff have been very nimble and flexible in how they've been working to bring these projects forward, identifying contingency plans, bid alternates, and looking for critical path issues and pivoting to make sure that when we got to those points, we were able to continue the forward momentum. The first batch of projects, sidewalk repairs. You've already seen some of this work. We were working to develop these projects even before the initiative was finalized. And so we were able to get to bid very quickly once the referendum was approved. We advertised late last year. The work began early this year. And we are a little bit more than 50% complete with that work. So that was the phase one of the sidewalk repairs. We are delivering these projects in two cycles. The second cycle, we have opened bids recently and we will be bringing that forward for award as well. And that contract should also start in January of 2026 and finishing up a year later. And so that will complete the first $15 million associated with sidewalk repair projects. Oh, if I can also point out, this will include a combination of treatment types, not just removal and replacement, but also some sidewalk grinding that has been a tool that we have incorporated. that has been a tool that we have incorporated into our, our program recently to make sure that we can make these funds go further. We do anticipate getting close to our projected 20 miles of sidewalk repair with both of these combined projects. And also the locations that have been identified were prioritized to focus the repair on the areas of the city where the residents are most dependent on alternative modes of transportation for their daily transportation needs. All right, the next batch of sidewalks or the projects we have are the sidewalk construction projects. We have a combination of projects here. There are some that are federally funded. There are some that are city funded. There are some that are on city streets, as well as some on NCDOT streets. And so each of these comes with their own unique frustrations in terms of delivery. But we have about 12.4 miles of sidewalks across 25 different locations represented here in, I believe it's 11 different projects. Some of these, for example, Bike Plus Walk Phase One, which is on this agenda cycle, has multiple locations. And so that's why we're able to address 25 locations with just 11 projects. So as I said, some of these are more complex than others. Some are road widening projects that have sidewalk with them, that include sidewalk and additional pedestrian amenities, and some are simply sidewalk projects. The Bike Plus Walk Phase One is simply a sidewalk project. East Club is the next project that is slated for average award and that is very near design completion. And General Services is here. They're managing that project if you have any questions for that. But we plan to start construction in early 2026. I will highlight a few more and then keep it moving. Hillendale Road is the next project coming forth after East Club. That is a federally funded project that is a bicycle and pedestrian project, very extensive work. We are almost finished with, no, I'm sorry, we're finished with right away acquisitions for that one. And we are awaiting NCDOT construction authorization. And we plan to advertise that and then begin construction in the spring of 2026. The last one I will point out here is the Maureen Road Bike Lanes, also a federally funded project with pedestrian amenities. We are almost finished with acquisitions for that one. We have run into a few issues as far as having to proceed with friendly condemnations. For example, with Durham Housing Authority, they have been working collaboratively with us, but that has been a very complicated process. So once we obtain that acquisition, as well as an acquisition with Duke Hospital, the attorneys are working on that as well. We will be able to move forward to construction authorization, as well as construction in spring 2027. And I will pause to see if there are any specific questions on these projects before I move forward. Okay. The next batch of projects managed by Environmental and Street Services here, $30 million for a street repair, approximately 100 miles of streets to be impacted by this work. The work that we do is not glamorous, but it is very much important to maintaining the infrastructure of the city. And so this is another one of those types of projects. We have already advertised the first batch of projects, I'll call them, for construction that work is ongoing, still doing our typical pavement preservation methodology with a combination of resurfacing, repaving and pavement preservation treatments. Those projects are wrapping up for this construction season. And construction began in 2025 for the repaving and, or sorry, April 2025. So the spring for repaving, as well as May 2025 for the pavement preservation. Let's see, the street repairs, which is the next phase of that. Because again, we were, as we said, when we were talking to the residents, these projects would be delivered in two phases. So now we are advertising for phase two of street repairs and repaving. And we should have that awarded later this year with, again, construction to start in 2026 for both of those projects. Paving is more seasonally constrained than concrete work, which is why you see these projects started in 2026, or spring of 2026 versus winter of 2026. And the last group of projects before I turn this over to Wade with the DPR projects is the unpaved roads program. So in 2019, council directed this department to pave all remaining unpaid roads in the city. At that time, it was just short of 19 miles of unpaid roads. They were spread across several hundred locations. Over the years, we have whittled that number down. At the time that we went out for the bond, there were still about eight or 10.8 miles of unpaid roads in the city. There was a project that was completed this year, so the number is about nine miles now. So ST 337 is the unpaved roads project, the first phase of the bond funded work, which was also on today's agenda. And we, once we receive award with that work, they will start construction in late 2025 or this winter. Even though this is asphalt work, there is some work that they can do before laying asphalt as the season or the temperature warms up in the spring. So that's phase one. And then the final phase of that work, again, these projects all delivered in two phases for maintenance type activities is the unpaved roads phase two. And that will be advertised about this time next fall, again, with the work to start later in 2026. And if there are no questions for me, I will turn the mic over to Wade.
Sure. Councilmember Freeman, before we transition to parks.
Yeah, thanks. Just a couple of questions. I appreciate you bringing this forward and I'm excited about all the projects. I just know I'm gonna get phone calls. So is there a dashboard that kind of tells? I know I'm looking, it looks like there's about 105 different sidewalk, just sidewalks. So how, how would I see kind of like a stoplight or traffic light? Kind of red, green, red, yellow, green on these projects and then also a map?
So the maps are on the bond website.
But they're by separated projects. They're not, they're not like if there's five of them in this one area. And then you have to like make all the detours in that area for this week, like kind of thing.
So that's the one place that the maps are available. The other place is for the individual project webpages. So as each, in Environmental and Street Services, each project has its own individual project webpage with the schedule, as well as the maps and the contracts and the locations available.
But there's no integrated map?
I do not know of an integrated map. Answering your other question about the stoplights, I don't know if these projects are part of the stoplight report.
I'm certain they're not.
Christina Riordan, Director of Budget and Management Services. So as we had talked about at our previous work session, Budget and Management Services has been doing some work on the quarterly stoplight report. So as the kind of projects come forward, so you'll get a, in our next quarterly report, you'll get that stoplight and then they'll have what you're used to seeing, the red, yellow and green and where they are kind of in that space.
Each of these projects will be in the quarterly report, is what you're saying?
As they're kind of, as they're financially kind of like contained as far as how we have, so as they're projects.
Once it moves forward from the public hearing and acquisition and then kind of actively goes into construction, it'll be in our stoplight report.
Right. And we group them by what we call projects, which is how we do the funding. So it might not be by individual contracts, but at least the projects and stuff.
New software that we're looking, or the new platform that we're looking at using to track these be helpful and maybe helping to integrate to create a map?
Yes, I think there's several things that we're looking at to kind of move that forward as we go into Oracle and I think some other technology that, project management software that will be going as well.
I would offer to sit in your integration meetings, but I don't want to do that.
Thank you.
But I will if I have to.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, can I just say how amazing and exciting this is to see this work moving forward? I also just want to just lean into the fact that we are operationalizing our equity tool and actually reprioritizing and changing the list in the order of projects that are gonna get addressed. And I think that's worth noting because under, under the old rubric, you know, how we do CIP and stuff, some of these areas may not have been where they are. So I, I think we should really just celebrate the concrete work and, and results we're getting from not just leaving our equity work on a shelf, but actually changing the order of projects. And some of these historically disinvested neighborhoods are moving up in rank. I, I don't want that to get lost. 12.4 miles of new sidewalk construction in our city. You know, put that in context, the island of Manhattan is only 13.4 miles long. So we, we are constructing almost enough new sidewalks to go from one end of Manhattan to the next. That, that's something I think that needs to be celebrated and lifted up. Paved roads, finally getting to our paved roads in the city. This is, this is, there's a lot of work to be done, but I, I just want to seriously just celebrate the vision of this and, and those who worked so hard on this bond. Councilmember Caballero, I know you, this was a big project for you and for our voters who, who approved it and the, the employment of our equity lens. This is a, this is a good thing, I think, and it's going to accrue good to us for generations to come. So I just want to thank y'all so much for the work and thank the voters and this council and councils that have worked on, on these type of projects and lean into infrastructure, the importance of, importance of our infrastructure as well. So kudos.
Thank you.
Thank you. Want to shift to parks now?
Yes, no?
I can just say it at the end. I just wanted to thank all y'all because I was in lots of meetings with you last fall.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. I'm Wade Walcutt with your Parks and Recreation Department. And we're talking about our, building our legacy parks. So we have one park bond that's going to impact and transform three different parks. So starting off first, we're gonna make some waves over at Merrick Moore Park. This is a place to swim, play, connect and belong. And this is just a reminder, a refresher, if you will, of the amenities and the activities and the priorities that the community told us when we went through the Splash and Play Plan a couple of years ago. And so those still ring true today. Some of the specifics you can see in the first bullet points from a zero depth entry to a spray ground and making sure there is lots of shade. And that word is very simple, shade. But that comes, that rings true through all of our parks. And that's a lot, a lot of what residents are asking for, places to cool down and have some shade. But not just having toddler slides and pool, but it's also having some adventure components and fitness components to this aquatic center, from a lazy river, of course, to a huge water slide tower, to even a climbing wall. But also there's been a lot of favor toward the competition pool and a place to do lap swimming and, and learn to swim as well. So something for everyone. The design approach that you'll see here is essentially going to be the same design approach that we're gonna talk about for Long Meadow and East End. And looking at those elements of transformational, being world class, having safety, having, being inclusive and accessible for all of our guests and visitors and residents, incorporating sustainability and efficiency practices, along with creating a space for community identity. So this project, you can see the budget there. This, where we're at right now from our conceptual plan is working with our design firm and general contractor and taking a look at the actual site. Before, we had a conceptual view of what, how shapes would fit on the site. Now, right now, we're taking a closer look and seeing how can we enhance public access and parking and reduce some of the spaces that you saw in a conceptual rendering a, a long time ago and how we can connect folks through the park and, of course, make connections to the pool, to wheel skating rink as well. You can see the expected schedule here at the bottom of the slide on where we are now and where we plan to be on our proposed opening day of Memorial Day in 2029. So since we've last been in front of you on the left side of the slide, we, you have approved the contract for the design firm and the construction manager at risk. We have done with them site visits to get a closer look of, of the site itself. We've had our project kickoff meeting where we established all of our goals, our roles, responsibilities and how our communication is gonna lay out. And like I mentioned earlier, confirm the alignment with the original plan and adjusting the layout today. And part of it also has been community engagement. It's really re-engagement, reminding folks, and especially at this particular site, our neighbors at Merrick Moore, where we were, we're back at it again. Here's our next steps. And then on the right hand of the, of the slide, these are the next steps you can expect. So we'll have cost estimate updates. Our design will continue. We'll deepen our relationship with the community as we move along. And we're gonna make sure we integrate all of our city initiatives and then begin that phase delivery. Now, as we move toward the other project, this is all about restoring ground, reuniting community. It's the renewal of East End and Long Meadow Parks, and this is chapter one. You can see the total budget here is very similar. And what is this? This is not just a park. It is a living crossroads of connecting people play in place. And that's at the forefront. Just like the design approach for Merrick Moore Aquatic Center, it's the same broad goals of transformational and world class. We're also looking at the amenities that rang true in the Splash and Play project that were priorities of the community. It's having a pool, it's having play spaces, athletic fields, courts, skating, climbing, fitness areas. It's also what really rang loud to us when we went through the original process was having that community space, that plaza. So that is still a priority. And again, like I foreshadowed earlier, pun intended, foreshadowed, shade and cooling opportunities ring true here for, for this, for these sites as well. Now, the phases here for this project are threefold. So the first is going to be some demolition of some existing amenities that just are beyond its useful life, i.e. the Long Meadow Pool. And we are gonna work our way from south the Long Meadow area and work our way north to the border of the East End Park. And so phase two is redeveloping, is putting all those elements in from Long Meadow up to the Sign and Signal Shop. And then there, there's essentially a line there. And that third phase and that, that line is the East End property. And this is what I've talked about a few times with you and the community about waiting till the end of this year to getting the data from the Department of Environmental Quality to inform us on how we can move forward. So again, similar to the last project, we have three phases here. You can see the timeline for phase one and phase two. And what I mean again is proposed opening of October 2028. That is going to be the majority, that is going to be Long Meadow Park as we know it right now and the Sign and Signal Shop. And there may be some elements north of that. We're not sure yet. And then the third phase is a, is a future date depending on the data and information we get from the Department of Environmental Quality. So again, since last time you heard about this from us, you can see that you approved the design and construction contracts for both groups. We have also had that project kickoff with those groups establishing our roles and goals and responsibilities. Again, we have been on site. And then we've also had a great partnership, both with the police department and community outreach and safety and community safety departments. Our schematic design has started. And then up next, what you can see coming in the future is park security and closing. What that means is securing the site so more of our contractors and design team can be on site to do their work. Part of that will include putting up the fencing and having the Connect Durham language and our bond language around there to signal to folks that good things are happening. Park in progress. Your bond dollars are at work. And so you'll see that happening at all these sites. Majority of Long Meadow Park will be closed during this time. The baseball fields will remain open. So that little section off to the side, the baseball, baseball fields and restroom, again, will remain open for all the program that we normally do. You can also, we will expect to see cost estimate updates coming. We will continue our relationships and engagement with the community. And just like the others, make sure we're incorporating all the city's initiatives and begin that, that phased approach. And Tasha and I have been, like Councilmember Caballero mentioned earlier, she's been a part of this process since we were first thinking about having a bond. And I've been with Tasha as we've been putting all this together. So I've learned enough from her that the streets and sidewalk projects So I've learned enough from her that the streets and sidewalk projects, just like our park projects, are building legacy. And, and so, you know, I thought of it, of course, selfishly and biased of a park, from a park perspective, but the streets and sidewalks and the parks is the city, and thankfully to the voters, of putting, you know, over 70% approval for their taxpayer dollars to make this transformation. So they're legacy parks, they're legacy projects. They're legacy parks and projects in the literal sense because these are being designed and built to last generations. So they're going to be designed and built to endure the environment or any financial or any social changes. They're legacy projects in a symbolic way as well because they're more than just a sidewalk, they're more than just a recreation space. They're a place where people connect and build community and build lives together. And what I love most about these projects is they, they reflect the values and the identity and really they reflect Bull City pride. And so we're really excited, all of us and all the staff, that we have the opportunity to work on some of these legacy projects and provide these gifts and serve the community in this way. So we're grateful for that. And then we will build great parks and our little brothers and sisters in Raleigh and Cary can, you know, model after us and, and go forward. So we're happy, Tasha and I or who else, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thanks so much, man. A great presentation. Colleagues, Mr. Mayor.
I just had a question around the current parks that are closed. I know we were talking about the bonds and I'm grateful to see all of this work happening. And I actually at one point forgot that we had did this. And I was wondering like, why is there so much construction on the corners downtown? But I see what's happening and it's, you know, everyone is fastly at work. Have we considered for a temporary solution, putting tarp over some of the parks that are closed?
Could you explain that a little bit more, tarps?
Yeah, it's, it's a short-term temporary solution for some of the closed parks. And I know some of them are what we're looking at redoing here, that ones that had lead in the soil.
Sure. Oh, so are you talking about?
Not to take us too far off topic, but I'm just thinking about.
So other parks not part of the bond project? Tarps to cover just the spaces? We can, we can look at that, sure. And we can find out more about the details of that.
I appreciate that.
Can I understand with more clarity, Mayor? Is that for, what would be the, what's the outcome you're wanting us to accomplish by covering the parks?
Well, with cautiousness of not taking us too far off topic for this, we do have a lot of closed parks due to the lead in the soil. I was asking if, you know, we could maybe look at being able to temporarily open up some of those parks, open them back up with the temporary solution.
So you're, you're saying, you're asking if there are measures we could implement to make them temporarily usable and that you were suggesting, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I better understand. Thank you. Yes, we have, we have five parks out of our 66 that are impacted by previous landfills or receiving, you know, landfill soil.
Yeah.
All of those parks do have portions that are open still. None, none of them are completely. There are some parks, obviously, that have majority of the space closed, prohibited access. We have looked at that very same thing. And as we defer to the state, they weren't comfortable endorsing that piece yet. Hoping again, and I sound like a broken record, but very soon we should have more data to allow us to make better decisions and see if there are portions of some of these parks that we can't open up. When they're, while they're doing their below-ground like vapor testing and soil and water testing right now, that is what I think holds them back a little bit on saying, yes, go ahead and open up these spaces. So we'd like just to wait until we get the science to help us make our decisions.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Councilmember Caballero?
Thank you. I just really appreciate the update and appreciate all of the work. I also appreciate the giant signs that y'all are putting out in some of these places because I know I've said from the beginning, I really want us to celebrate. I know when I've traveled to other cities, there's clear giant signers. It's like, welcome to this thing or thank you voters for this bond or whatever. So I think that it helps further that communications that we've talked about celebrating the wins. I think folks really need good news right now and to show that election night last year was a sad, sad state of events, other than our very amazing bond approval here in Durham. And to see, it was a risk. I mean, it was one of the first times we've ever put a city bond measure on a general election ballot in a presidential year. We usually line it up with municipal elections, which has much lower turnout. So I think it's also a testament that it probably captured folks who maybe don't vote in municipal elections, but still wanted to see this in their communities. So I, I think that it was, it was worth doing when we did it and certainly got us ahead of, by a year on some of these projects. And we know, especially with cost of construction, a year can cost a community a lot of money. So thank you to, please remember to invite us to anything, any ribbon cutting. Many of us may not be here when those ribbons get cut in the future, but reach out to us anyway so that we can celebrate some, some lovely things. I remember when Merrick Moore Soccer Fields opened, you know, that, that was a, a great event and y'all did a fantastic job. DPR did a fantastic job bringing community together. So looking forward to those ribbon cuttings and shovel. I think I remember when Merrick Moore was there and I dug the dirt and cut a ribbon. So I want to do both. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Councilmember Baker?
I'm also team sign. I like, like showing people physically what, what the city is doing. And so on the question of the bond, my only question is, could you just give, give us a little bit of, a little bit on the public input into the design process? And then on, just because it came up, the lead in the park situation, I just wanted to see, this is something that we discussed earlier, potentially convening your working group and getting started on design, sort of anticipating what, what kind of new data might be coming back and if that's something that, that you're, you all are planning on moving forward with. Thank you.
What was your, what, I'm sorry, what was the first part of the first question?
Public input into the design.
We had close to two years' worth of that public engagement process. And so that was part of the, you know, honestly, I could go back further than that. We had a aquatics comprehensive plan that happened 2017-ish, let's say. And we benchmarked various cities around the country and said, hey, Durham, the city of your size, we need more aquatic opportunities. And so that started off when we looked areas of the city where we needed more pools. And we knew East Durham was definitely one of them. And we also, part of that study in 2017, looked at the age of our pools. And they're not young. So 1950s, I think, were when some of them were built. So that started the engagement process then. Then about two years ago, it took about two years' worth of engagement. We identified locations. That's how we purchased the Wheels property. And then we were reminded that there might be a strong feeling about reopening Wheels Roller Rink. So we did that and that's been great. And so all the priorities that you're going to see in our planning documents, whether it's for Merrick Moore, Long Meadow, or East End, you're going to see the raw data of how many votes and how many people wanted this amenity. And all the priorities that are going to be designed and developed come from the community. So when I say legacy parks built together, it's a literal statement. And I, I think your second part of the question was maybe regarding the other parks, the pre-regulatory landfill parks?
Yeah, I know. It's a separate topic, but just because it came up, I was, I wanted to, while you're here, I wanted to follow up on a previous conversation we'd had about potentially, and if you don't have the answer right now, don't worry about it. But well, I would love to, to get the answer today, but convening that entire working group that has of at-large community members and technical experts and nonprofit orgs that have been involved.
Yeah, the, the community and we're a partner with them in the first part. They're producing, you may recall, several soil shops that are coming up. And I will give you that information, the list of the dates and locations where they're going to be able to provide all kinds of information that, that residents are interested. Since June of '23, or I'm sorry, a few months after in '23, we developed this working community group that have all the folks that you just mentioned, whether it's been in-person meetings, remote meetings, or communications at least once a month. That has continued for two years. Like we mentioned, you and our conversation, probably haven't met recently, that will happen soon. Just as a refresh of here's where we are, here's what we anticipate when we get information from the state. And these are the alternative ideas that we've been thinking about, to the mayor's point, to some community members' point, frankly, to my point of like, what can we do, what areas can we open that we can be creative and maybe have some supplemental ideas there too? Because we know, thanks to, to you, we have funding in our capital improvement program that we can address some of those issues. And Councilmember Freeman, I wanted to, I mentioned with Long Meadow and East End specifically, even in this early design, as we're just trying to get our ducks in a row, designing for intentional spaces to have storytelling opportunities is, is a priority of ours. And I think you mentioned that previously. So I wanted to make sure you knew that, that, that was a priority.
Colleagues, anyone else?
I would just echo the update or whatever is going to happen. But I know the no future meetings, no currently planned meetings for the lead in the park is kind of concerning, but I appreciate the update on East End and Long Meadow.
Wade, could you, I would clarify that the soil shops are, are public meetings specifically on this topic and from this topic. So I don't want to leave the impression that there aren't meetings. There's a number of intensive meetings with a lot of public information, a lot of educational value to those. So Wade, could, could you clarify that those are?
Yes, they're absolutely, they're, I think most of them, if not all of them, take place in our recreation centers. Our team will be there and we'll have a booth set up as well. Those are being shared with that, that group and the community at large as well.
And I would just ask that you update the website.
Will do.
Just following up to say, thank you for, for the work. Yeah, I'm very excited. Team sign. Thanks.
Outstanding. Great work.
Just also, just harkening back, I think that this all started from a 2013 plan around all the parks in R.C. And then 2017 specifically for the aquatics. But the, the connection from R. Kelly Bryant, I think that is really monumental and I really appreciate because the east side of Durham does, does not have as well-connected routes near the creeks or the trails like in, like it does on north or south. And so that's helpful.
Yeah, that's just, you've made a great point. It's an exciting opportunity. As I always say, we're literally and figuratively connecting these two parks and we can't do without the R. Kelly Bryant Bridge Trail.
Awesome, thank you. Colleagues, before we take a break, Madam Clerk, do you want to give your report very quick and then we'll break?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I've got two boards and committees to report on. The first is the Durham Planning Commission appointment. Council has nominated America Y. Juarez Maldonado. And the second one for the Human Relations Commission, we do not have consensus on that. Kristin Barrett has received three votes. And then there was a distribution between the others of Letitia Graham, Charles Robinson, and Robin A. Smith. And I didn't know if somebody would like to change their vote.
Colleagues?
Is my vote helpful at all?
You're under Kristin Barrett. Kirsten.
You can change mine. You can change mine to the majority.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That means that Kristin Barrett has received the nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, the manager has also just informed me as well, since the next presentation is just a presentation, we can go ahead and settle the agenda now, actually, and dispense with that now. And then once the presentation's over, we can adjourn, if that's okay, without objection. Mr. Manager, can we settle?
Thank you. Settling the agenda, items one through 22 are on consent. There are no GBA items. Item 25 has been referred back to staff.
Outstanding. Motion to settle?
So moved.
Heard a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those oppose? All right. Three-ten, long enough? Three-twelve? Three-twelve. All right. We'll, we'll be back. We're in recess until three-twelve. Thank you. Thank you.
We're in the wrong direction. We're losing people not getting up.
Fringe is 312, if we'll come back to order. Anyone seen any councilmembers roaming the hallways? Would you, Bueller? Bueller? One, two, three. All right. Any more councilmembers with you? All right, we're at quorum. Let's proceed.
Good afternoon. I'm Sheri Metcalf, Strategic Manager for Budget and Management Services Department. Welcome back. We are here for our second part, a continuation of our September 18th meeting. So just a high-level timeline, so we all remember where we are in this overall process. The goal for today is to get a draft goals and priorities that we will then use when we go out to our community. Okay, so we're going to be doing the next couple of months. We're going to be doing a bunch of different community and employee engagement. We'll be using some good old-fashioned paper surveys. We'll also be, we're excited to be using our new Community Partnerships and Engagement Department. They're going to be helping us out with community conversations. So we're going to take all this information that we're going to collect over the next couple of months. And we'll be back in front of you all in February at the Budget Retreat. And that is when we will finalize our goals and our priorities, the ones that are going to be in our strategic plan, to kind of finalize that structure. And that kicks us into Phase 2 of our strategic planning process, which then comes out to staff, where we start developing those really important initiatives, those action items that we're going to be doing in the next three years to get us to where we want to go. So, and that will all come back to you again at the end of May. So we, following the budget process, so when you are coming together to talk about budget, we will also be there to talk about strategic planning. So today is all about getting that draft goals and those priorities that we're going to then take out to the community. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and kick us over to Warren Miller and Danielle Fadaki from Fountain Works. They are once again going to lead us in our conversation. And I hope you enjoy the next two hours, maybe less. We'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheri. So, good afternoon. Glad to be back with you. Thank you so much for having us back. And what I want to do is just jump right into our agenda here. Got it up on the screen. And really just restating again what Sheri said is that we want to get to a point today where you have agreement on your goals and priorities so that you can then take this out to the community. And so what we're going to do is just a quick recap of how we got to this point. Just refresh ourselves on what we did since the September session. And then we're going to go through the different components, values, lens, goals, priorities. So we're going to work through each of those. And then we're going to talk about the next steps. So that's big picture, what we're going to do. And, you know, I guess before we jump into this, any, just anything that you need to get out of this, or any questions, or anything that would just be helpful to put on the table before we get started? Everybody good? Yeah?
I, just as I was thinking through it last time, you know, and I'm looking forward to the community part of this. But, and I'm biased of this, I'm going to give you my ideas as a human being, as a resident of Durham. I just don't want to be so far removed from the functionality of how government works, how the city works, how we engage. I want to let that center us and be grounded in that. So I may tell you that, you know, I, I don't know, I may tell you a goal that may be unrealistic because it's what I feel, you know, as a person. But I hope that you'll pull us back in and center us and keep us focused on what the actual mission is here.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, this is, you are the city council. You set direction for this organization and the community. You're establishing things that you want to focus on over the next five years. And what this will do is it will communicate to your organization, to the community, what you intend to accomplish, what those outcomes are, what your values are all about, so that you can then continue to make progress on that. So, you know, to your point, it's, you know, a strategic plan is about aspirational, it is about stretching, but it's also about getting really clear on what you intend to get done. So we want to keep it within the structure of the plan itself, but there's certainly room for you to put out those things that you, you know, that you want to put out to the organization and community. But I'll pull you back in if we need to. All right. Anything else you want to make sure that you get out of this conversation before we jump into it? Anything you've been thinking about since September 18? All right. We'll get into it. All right, so the work so far. Three things that we did at the September workshop. You got oriented into your current strategic plan, goals. And then what you did during that session is you identified a set of priorities. And then we spent some time trying to organize those around a set of goals. And we had some conversations, and you had some different options, structures that you came up with. You had a list of priorities that you felt were important. So we were around the room generating ideas, and we started to get that organized. Weren't able to land on a specific goal structure, but you weren't that far off. But we needed a little bit more time. And we did not land on a set of finite priorities that you want to take out to the community. So there was some more work that needed to be done. And so after that session, working with staff, compiled your work, organized it a bit, and then sent out a survey for you to help. One of the things we thought would help make this afternoon a little more efficient is giving you a chance to look at all those priorities that you identified and doing some ranking of those. So we'll take a look at that. The idea is you were evaluating which ones are, that you felt were most important, so that we can then finalize that list today. So that survey, that work from the September 18th session is what we're going to review today. So a lot has been happening behind the scenes. Just, again, any other questions about what led up to today, sort of how we got here? You've got, everybody, I think, is going through it. You've got your handouts to just, to go through. And so we'll follow this along. The way we're going to, the way that we'll, yeah, actually, we can move to the next slide. So we want to review the value lenses. Your city manager shared that out with you. So we'll review that today, what that means. And then we want to come away with selecting a set of goals, again, that you can take out to the community. This is not your final set of goals, but something that you feel comfortable taking out to the community to get some feedback on. And we want to select about five priorities per goal. So your current strategic plan has about three for each of the goals. We're going to expand that a little bit so you can get some more feedback. But that would be shared out with the community. And the community can then take a look at that. They can add, give you feedback on those priorities. So those are the things that we want to walk out of here with today. Okay. So reviewing the terms. So one of the things that emerged when we started going through the goals and priorities in the last session was the importance of making sure that the values that are already part of your organization are clearly reflected in the plan. So, for example, you were talking in the previous segment about equity and the equity lens that you're applying to some of the decisions related to bond. And so the importance of having these articulated, having them clear and communicated is something that we want to get into. So the idea is that when you, as a council, have a set of values, you're applying these across all of the decisions that you're making, the tactical decisions across all of the goals that you're making. So when you think about equity, for example, equity is something that you, you're going to be looking at projects, about priorities, and you think about that lens, that equity lens. How will this enhance equity in our community? So you have two choices, choice A, choice B. You're applying that lens to the decision. And so it's the idea of, we wanted to get that more clearly communicated and a part of your strategic plan. So it's in there, it's something you have, but it's something we want to pull out. And you, at our last session, all of you articulated some values. So we'll go and take a look at those, those are on your handouts there. The goals are the overarching things that you want to accomplish that'll help you, take you to that vision. They are broad-based. The example we've got up here is safe community. And then you have priorities, which are the things that you need to do really well to achieve those goals. So you have the example there of reducing gun violence as an example of a priority. So just, I just wanted to just start with these terms. We'll dive in specifically to value lenses in just a moment. But any question about the terms that we're working with? Really, the new one is the value lens. Okay. So let's look at these. So there are, there were four that we heard that came out in the September session that are, you know, and working with staff to identify these. You see them up on the screen here and in your handout. And our intent today is not necessarily to finalize this. Our main focus is on the goals and the priorities. But we want to bring, we want to bring these forward, see how these land with you, and see if they're, just check this. You'll have another chance to come back to these as part of the strategic planning process. So you have equity, economic justice, environmental justice, community engagement. As I was listening to the conversation from the last couple of hours, these were coming up, these values were coming up over and over in some of your comments. So how do these land with you, these values? As a thumbs up, as a? Adriana, just, how do they? Good, okay.
This definitely sounds like us. I mean, it, there's almost an internal redundancy to it. In some, they each overlap and inform each other. But this definitely sounds like us. Yeah. I mean, in a good way.
They're powerful. Yeah. I think, you know, just to add on that comment, I think I remember you saying in September, we don't want, like, we don't, we don't want this to be a cookie cutter. I think you might have used those words. But these, you know, these are intended to reflect the values of you as a council, of you as an organization, as a community, as you think about your decisions. Nate, any reaction to these?
Yeah, I take our silence as, I think our silence is making a statement about the fact that these kind of, these land pretty well. The only thing that's on my mind that I don't even need to change, but the only thing I'm thinking about here is, under equity and economic justice, we talk about historical inequity and historically marginalized or excluded, which is, of course, important. But for me, it's about today and who is marginalized and excluded today and making up those gaps. Who is experiencing inequality, not just historically, but today?
Yeah.
But I don't really need, I don't need to change that. It's just something that I'm.
Yeah.
I'm, I like this framework.
Yeah, it's a good build.
That is really interesting. Because as I was thinking, it's like, you know, I'm being nitpicky about this. Verbatim, almost, what Councilmember Baker just said. Like, I, historically, which is, the word is actually in there, historical, acknowledging the past, yes. But my goal is to make sure the past doesn't happen again. And so I want to capture how we move forward. But moving forward, capturing that acknowledgement, rather than just starting back to like, I don't want to go back and like, all right, let me go and try to fix the past. I want to make sure that everything we do forward does not allow the past to happen.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, these are powerful values. I mean, you know what I mean. You know, I just, yeah, it's like, I'm fine with it. But if you're asking me for feedback, like, my initial feedback is like, are we, are we, you know, going to war with the past or are we preparing to make sure the past never happens again? The bad, the negative impacts of the past.
Yeah.
And I don't really know how to, where to start moving forward. Unless it's, you know, economic, something to ensure that it's economic justice, you know? And also, for me, justice almost implies that we are trying to fix something. We're trying to make sure something doesn't go wrong. We're trying to fix something that's wrong. Whereas, you know, it's like economic, it's almost, I'm looking at equity and economic justice, like, economic equity moves forward, ensuring that the past, negative impacts of the past does not happen, rather than, you know, putting the balance of justice on the past behaviors and harms. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
Yeah, I want to mark, and then I may just add to what you're saying here.
Councilmember Baker and the mayor is, it's an intriguing, I think, a read or gloss. Because for me, the whole equity industry is based upon the premise that history is still with us. It was never, history in this context does not mean it happened, put a ribbon on it. Equity, that, the whole thrust of equity, it exists because our history still informs who we are. We are living based upon things that were codified historically. So it's an interesting gloss, but I never, you know, I never thought of it needing proofreading because it was always just assumed those of us who speak equity just knew that our history is very. because it was always just assumed those of us who speak equity just knew that our history is very much alive today and informing our context. But, you know, I'm not against tweaking the language, but I, that's an interesting take. I never thought of it as, in that sense.
Yeah.
Our history is now.
Yeah. And I think Nate, that's, that's part of what you were, you were getting to. And you know, the idea of this is that you have a project. You had, let's say you have an econo, you have a development project that's before you. You want to be asking these questions. You're thinking about these things that you apply. Is this something we should do or not? Or we have two choices. How is this impact, you know, what's the impact of this from an equity standpoint? That, you know, that's the idea is like using this as a tool to help make sure you're always thinking about these and, and the projects and the things that you're doing and that the, the, the organization is thinking about these and things that are, you know, even things that don't come to your, your desk here, that the, that the organization is applying these.
Can you explain to me a little bit like the, I get the values lens, but how does it fit in structurally?
Structurally? Yeah, I mean, think about it as you are, as you are pursuing priorities, as you are pursuing tactical actions, you are asking these questions to make sure that your decisions are consistent with these values.
Yeah, I guess is it, I, I understand the definition of examples. I'm just thinking like, you know, our current plan is it, one leads into the other. So would this be the highest level?
Yeah, yeah, think of it as like an umbrella.
Yeah.
And if I can, so part of the conversation we had setting up for this, and I think our, our facilitators and fountain works really came up with this construct. As we heard you working through the language for the goals and sort of struggling and going back and forth, what, what we eventually sort of deciphered is it felt like you were trying to make sure each of the goals got language around these values and that it was, it felt more simplified and more elegant to say, why don't we just pull the values out and say, the whole plan is going to reflect these values so that the council didn't feel compelled to try and make sure each goal statement hit these four values when what we know is these four values sort of undergird everything you guys want us to do in the strategic plan. So this is the lens through which all the other work in the strategic plan will be projected and these values will be honored in all of the work. I think that's, that's how this construct sort of came about.
Thank you, then I have some. I personally, like when the economic justice, like we're all residents, I would just say we're residents.
Okay.
Same with the all in the environmental justice. All, protect all residents from environment. I mean, I, I think that if it's going to inform it, I, I understand visioning, but it's also, to me, things that aren't actually, like you can't deliver on a thing, then it's actually just miscommunication and, and over, over promising that they can't.
Yeah.
So I just want to be, I'm always, I'm very practical and I want to make sure that while we have lofty language and I don't, that there's a, you know, it's a strategic, a strategic plan for a reason. We do actually have to organize our work to a thing.
Right.
And so our North Star to me has to be a North Star we can actually like align to. So just to be wherever that is, just to be careful, I guess. Like I like, I like the community engagement piece because it's like provides opportunities, right? An opportunity is kind of a two-way thing. You may not get engaged on every single decision. That doesn't mean we're not going to try.
Yeah.
But that's why we provided you an opportunity. Part of that is then also you have to be an engaged resident and give us the feedback, right? Like it's, it's both and, so the, yeah.
Yeah, that's good, good feedback. Did you, Anna, any? Okay. Yeah.
And I just want to lean in on values and not allowing our values to become a, a tool to become overly bureaucratic to where we can't produce. But more so a tool to, you know, set parameters in how we make decisions and how we move forward.
Right. Yeah.
And, and that's why I appreciate removing the all, it's like, it's almost like down, okay, now you got to get the signatures of all these people to do something.
Yeah, yeah. But do you feel, but for, for you, as you think about applying these to prize this, these, you know, some of, there may be times when some of these values could come in conflict with each other, right? So you could have a project that, you know, where economic justice and environmental justice, you know, may, there may be some tension. And that's okay, and that happens. But you're, you're trying to raise the awareness that you're thinking about these and that you will have to work through sometimes where there are, yeah, I'm just, you're nodding as, yeah.
I think this happens naturally. When I first got on council, I used to call Councilmember Freeman, no offense. I used to call her an equity watchdog. Because everything we talked about, it was always, well, did you consider these people? Did you consider those people? Did you consider these people? And in my mind, I'm like, well, for me, equity is a lifestyle, you know? And I automatically think about that lens as well as the more, you know, this holistic approach. And I thought it was a really good balance because she communicated it, you know, more, better than I did when we were deliberating cases. Now she's environmental watchdog and it just, you know, I think we, I think this is basically verbalizing how we function anyway.
Yeah, that's right. And, and you're communicating it to, to the, to the community. Yeah. All right, it sounds, it sounds like we're, these are landing. We can, we can do a little tweaking. Again, these will come back to you. You'll have another chance to look at these, but we can, I think we can move on from this. Okay, so the next, the next thing to go over are the goal structures. So there are, you've got, you have, I think you have these in the handout too, right? So you have these, there, there were three structures that you came up with. And then the fourth is what, what's the staff recommendation? Kind of looking, looking at these, looking, listening to the conversation, the fourth one in yellow is what the staff came up with. And you were, you know, you were, if you look at these, you're pretty close. And then, but there were some things that you wanted to pull out. There are some changes that you wanted to make. And so the intent was to reflect those in structure four. So for example, you wanted to pull out, I mean, you can read it for yourself, but you wanted to pull out affordable housing, sort of having that, so sort of creating a goal, affordable housing, accessible transportation, connected and engaged, inclusive communities. So part of the community engagement value is sort of, that's, that's reflected across your goals. So you can see there, there were some tweaks. But ultimately, structure number four was the one that we want to check in on that and see, see how that one lands with you as something that you feel, that you'd be comfortable taking out to the community and knowing that you, you would have an opportunity to, to come back and tweak this. Yeah.
Do you remind me how the structures work again? I guess I'm.
Yeah, just think of it as your strategic plan has these broad goals. And so we, we were, at the last session, we were sort of like, well, should we have this set of goals or tweak it slightly? So we just put those different options that you were, you were thinking about, one, two, and three, up there for you to look at and remember this, these were the conversations we had. But then the fourth is working with staff, was their recommendation of how we think we could, based on what they heard you say, pull these together in a, in a, a set of goals. So just want to see how these land, get some, get some initial take. Nate, do you want to get started?
Sure, yeah. Looks like we're basically taking structure four, basically structure one, but swapping out or kind of renaming connective, connected, engaged, inclusive communities would become affordable housing and accessible transportation, more or less. And then vibrant, built-in natural environment would become vibrant sustainability and intentional infrastructure, more or less. I want functional buckets that we can work with, so.
Yeah.
I can definitely compromise. Vibrant sustainability and intentional infrastructure seems a little clunky to me compared to vibrant, built-in natural environment, but I can compromise.
Okay. So the word, the, the concept works, but the wording could be maybe back to, and I think I remember in, in September, you were, you were advocating or you were okay with the, the, the previous set. Yeah, okay. Leo?
I, I, you know, I understand goals. I just, I, I get a little, it feels a little weird when we're, it can be a goal to have affordable housing, obviously. It's just really subjective and I don't know how we make it practical. Of course, I want, I want the housing to be affordable, but you know, are we putting it out there as, you know, as something that we value? Is, it's something that we want? How do we operationalize? I can say, I can tell you how we can make communities safe. I can tell you how we can make housing safe. I can tell you, I can tell you how to make housing affordable, but it just kind of goes into this quackmire of for who, you know? And then it gets into the philosophy of, you know, accessibility, attainable, accessible housing, attainable housing, affordable housing, all the A-word housing. I kind of get lost in that. It's, to me, it's more of a value than a, an actual, I, I guess it could be a goal, that's fine. I just, yeah. Housing for everybody is what, what, what.
I would just say maybe if you put the actual 30% of your, like tying it to our actual number might make it feel a little less subjective. So if your housing costs are 30% or below and your transportation is accessible to where you live and where you work, something more specific.
Yeah, you want to, you would want to have metrics.
30% or below. So your housing costs should be, that's what makes it affordable. At any rate, 30% or below.
Of your, yeah.
I, I, I just think that if we, if our goal is to house, make sure people are housed, you know? We're going to get into how accessible it is. We're going to get into how attainable it is. We're going to get into ultimately how affordable it is, you know? So are we, are we talking housing or are we talking, you know, what type of housing? I don't know.
Is it something where you'd want to, is it the word affordable that's maybe, maybe something that you want to rethink?
Well, obviously we want affordable housing.
Yeah.
But how?
Yeah.
You know, and, and I, I want to be able to tie actionable steps. And I can do that with affordable housing, but understanding that affordable is more subjective than, than, than actionable.
Yeah. Yeah, and these are the what, the whats, the what you want to treat, achieve. Did you, did you want to jump in on this?
Specific to cost, the tying the number to make it less subjective. Tying the cost rather than just a number.
Okay. Anyone else want to weigh in on these?
I think, I think last time I had talked about the innovative, efficient, and high-performing organization designation. What's interesting to me is all of these other bullets are, I mean, clearly reflective. I think, well, let me just put it out there. Our conversation about the whole Peregrine contract, which, you know, some of our people in our org chart would, would argue that goes directly of becoming more efficient and high performing by integrating information and accessing it more quickly. But when that, and as I said before, when that runs up against our values, there, there's tension because, and, and I, I think I said before, I mean, you can be, you can be efficient and evil. You know, you can be a really bad organization, just do it really well. And what, what organization does not want to be high performing? And I just think when, when, when high performance runs up, when we have our managers or people in our org chart coming and, and say this will make us more efficient, but then it, it, but for the sake of equity, for the sake of our own values and views, do we, do we hinder it, hamper it? Do we, so I, I guess, I mean, on its face, obviously we'd say yes, but in real world application, you know, how do we really want to be that efficient and high performing? You know?
Related to the conversation earlier.
Conversation earlier today. So that's just kind of.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's, that's, I believe that is the language you had from the previous goal. And you, you would want to apply these value lenses across these. Yeah.
I mean, I think another example, we, you know, we had, we had a rather protracted conversation about funding our ADUs as well just recently, which, which was a kind of a innovative kind of thing. But my colleagues, and rightfully so, I'm not, I'm not saying that they were wrong or I have a problem with it. But there was some reticence about it because of, you know, us putting money forward and how do we, I think there was some back and forth at our last, I mean, our Monday night meeting, that this was, this was something innovative and let's kind of, you know, lean into it and see where it goes. But there was some, some reticence, you know, lack of traditional banks wanting to touch it, cities exposure, what it may do in terms of, will it do the opposite of what we want it to do? But it was all in the name of being innovative. And, and so I just wonder, you know, when we say it, when it's disconnected from real world examples, it hits different when you start actually applying it. So that, that's what's kind of just popping around in my cross, so.
Well, what would you want to make sure you communicated to the community? Like what's important that you'd say? This is what we want to be able to deliver.
I think the four boxes prior to this, we, we are, we're more concerned about our values being protected than necessarily being quick or being, and, and at least from my seat, I've seen that, that conversation play out time and time again in many different contexts, that we'd rather be true to our values, even if it means kicking something down the road or, or, or not doing it at all.
Yeah. Thought on this?
So are you wanting to just remove the whole thing?
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I'm not saying.
I mean, I'm just asking for a preference, I just.
You know, no, Nate made me talk. I just.
He sensed it.
Yeah, I say all that to say, I don't know what that.
Yeah.
Yields, but that's just what I was thinking.
Yeah. Did you, did you want to suggest a?
Yeah, I, I'll say something. Next time you don't want me to talk, I will remind you that you asked to talk at another time. Can we either do a safe community or safe communities? Do you see him saying, like, that's driving me crazy?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, yeah, I'm like, come on, we need an article there. So, you know, or say, you know, it could be safe communities or a safe community.
How about a safe community? Cause.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I think that that's the one that I have.
Okay.
That carries over from the past. I think everyone's on board with it. When you go into the goals.
Yeah.
Or the other pieces, there's a lot around.
Right.
You know, youth prevention or, you know, so there's, so I feel great about that one.
Yeah.
The collective economic, I don't like broad-based. I don't know why. Something to that, a synonym that gets it. I like the collective and something, but, and, and I think the same thing, the economic prosperity. I felt like there was a lot of alignment on council around that.
Yeah.
So again, so that's wordsmithing to me and not necessarily conceptual, right?
So you're, you're okay with it conceptually, but just particularly the broad-based.
Yeah, the collective is fine, the broad-based is, I don't know, is there a synonym that we could figure out?
Or would you be okay with just collective, economic, prosperity?
That, that would maybe work. To, to the mayor Pro Tem's point around innovative, efficient, if there's a way to get to that thing with goals, like we all listed, you know, pay and benefits and promoting that within the organization and outside of the organization. If there's a way to figure out how to collapse it somewhere else, I'm open to that. I'm not super tied to that one because so much of that is internal facing. And so it's hard to kind of make that connection out to the community around it.
So, so make sure I understand. So for that one, would you, would you, you would want to keep that as a goal?
I don't know. I don't know if there's ways to get strategies, like the, the strategy gets you the thing. Like I'm, because so much of that is like about our work.
Internally facing.
Internally facing versus what we're doing with community, but I, I don't know. Like I'm not, that's always been one of the ones that from our former strategic plan.
Yeah. Yeah.
That are so many of the things that are tied to it is really about how are we working? And to me, a strategic plan, I mean, it, it is internal and external, but because this is really being promoted to the community, I don't know if it, it, like.
You see it as an enabler to?
Yeah, kind of. Yeah, like, you, you, through these things, you get those things.
Yeah.
Like, through, through that, you get to these other goals.
Yeah. I think, just to, just, but not to interrupt, but, um, you know, I think that you, within this goal area, you would also have delivering on your core services, for example.
Yeah, and that's where the whole, you know, infrastructure piece and housing and transportation, cuz those are, those are the biggest buckets of our core services, right? So that's where, that's where I'm like, are you capturing it somewhere else and then it can go away? I don't know.
So you'd argue maybe pulling that out as a sort of a, an internal enabler, something you still track and you focus on, but for the community, for the purpose of sharing it out with the community, it's?
Yeah, I mean, that's just a thought. I don't know where everybody else is. And then with the affordable housing, accessible transportation, I, I don't, again, I think that conceptually something around housing and transportation, or if it gets captured in infrastructure, it, it's gotta get, cuz infrastructure's big. And a lot of times when people think about infrastructure, they think about roads, right? But infrastructure to me also means, like, transportation, like, the buses we purchase, right?
Yeah.
The housing we're helping deliver, like, that, that's infrastructure as well. So I don't know how we say it.
Yeah.
But I don't want it to just be lost in infrastructure, cuz I think folks hear that and they don't necessarily think about that.
Yeah, so that would be an argument then that you're making to, to keep it pulled out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I'm not, if, if there's a way to capture it in that kind of vibrant sustainability and intentional infrastructure, it's fine. I just think it needs to be called out somehow.
Yeah.
That's all. Those are my thoughts, thank you.
And that, and that, that came out in the last session, that you wanted, you wanted to elevate it and call it out. Yeah.
I feel really, I feel really strongly about the innovative, efficient, and high-performing. Whatever, uh, the other, the other thing is. Organization.
Yeah.
Simply because I, I think that is one of the most front-facing community expectations. I mean, think about the, the rail trail. You know, it's like, when is it gonna get done? When is it gonna get done? Like, what are, what are you guys doing? You know, and, uh, just around any project, you know, things just take too long and folks think we're not doing anything. That's why we're talking about putting signs up to show the bond results, you know? So I, I think that that allows us to be able to show, and it also, it, it does allow us the ability to incentivize, you know, proficiency internally. I, I think that, you know, internally and externally, this is our strategic plan, is how the organization functions. So, and I like a safe community, uh, cuz it's overall, you know, the whole, the whole Durham community. But yeah, I do feel, um, most strongly about that one. I think it's important how we, how we deliver.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I think what I'm hearing is these five. And Mark, catch me? If, but I think these are the right goals with a little bit of wordsmithing to them.
Yeah.
Like you said. But that, with, if you, these are, these are the major areas of focus that you wanna make sure you're, you're, setting your, your agenda around.
What, what catches me is the more adjectives we use, the more I get caught up in, like, how do we get to that point?
Yeah.
You know, like, housing is what we do. Affordable housing is one type of housing.
Yeah.
And we need housing at every level, every income level, every type, you know, that we can get. So I just don't wanna limit us because of the adjectives we're using around the thing that we do. Say something. Say something.
No, I think, I think what you're saying makes sense in an abstract way, but then.
Say that again. I never get that.
You have to, you have to have.
She did say abstract.
I was trying to stop her before abstract.
Sorry, go ahead.
You have to really consider, th- th- this is why I was saying that thirty percent makes it specific. But I think from the comment about, like, transportation, and I've served, I've served on a transportation infrastructure committee for the National League of Cities, and it's together. So it makes sense to say, like, if you're talking about infrastructure, if you were to say vibrant and sustainable or vibrant sustainability and intentional housing and transportation and, or infrastructure, transportation and housing, something like that might be helpful.
Wait, say that again.
I, I like that. Because the thing is, we're not, we're not just talking about just one demographic or one economic class or one group of people. We're talking about everybody, and what she just said encompasses the actionable thing that we do. We're being intentional about housing and transportation, infrastructure, or however you say it.
Housing, well, transportation and housing. And that was what I was trying to say with the thirty percent, cuz thirty percent matches any income. Like, if you make a million dollars, thirty percent. If you make thirty thousand dollars, thirty percent.
I don't think we need to go, I, I don't even think we need to put the thirty percent. I think what you just said encompasses it all.
Yeah.
And then with our values and equity, it allows us to, you know, address who needs what where.
Yeah. I, I think you could just do intentional and sustainable or something like that.
Intentional and sustainable housing, transportation, and infrastructure.
Yeah, because then, like.
And take out the vibe.
Yeah, cuz it's the same thing, again, the adjective is too, it just gets too like, woo, sorry, I'm gonna say. It gets so woo, like, oh, la, 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 it's like, no, can we deliver on the thing or can we, can we not? So.
You're gonna spend the day thinking about woo and what that means.
Whole foods, walk in there, it's woo.
So then, yeah, so, um, so then that would, that would drop you down to four.
Yeah.
And that, that would make, that would make you happy.
Focus.
But I guess, I'm, Mark, you're still.
He's a pastor, so we are counter on the word here.
Yeah.
Now, I'm, I'm, I'm vibing with everything my colleagues.
Okay, alright.
I wanna say, I, I, I think when, when you mention the innovative, efficient, and high-performing organization, as long as it's not in contrast to one of the other things is the, and that's the one that does kind of can conflict with the others.
Yeah.
Is like more so than any of the other three.
I don't see how. I, I think the.
Just the example he gave, just the one. If it's not safe, if, if, if it doesn't build economic prosperity, like, if it's not gonna give us intentional, sustainable housing, then the innovative, you know, it might become secondary, it's, it's the one for me specifically.
I think that's how we get there, though.
That becomes secondary.
To me, like, you know, if it's not a safe community, then we need to be innovative, we need to be efficient, high-performing organization to get to a safe community, economic prosperity. I, I think, I think actually the, the innovative, efficient, the third one, is the vehicle to actually make all those things happen.
And if it's not, yeah.
No, I agree with, I agree with the mayor, and, and I, I, I agree. I think, though, this particular organization has demonstrated that when we get to that, it, it, it can be, uh, it's almost kind of like arguing for a merit-based society. You know, and then you start getting into who determines what's meritorious and who's kind of, whenever you cut corners for merit, like, merit just kind of dropped out of the air as this kind of neutral kind of thing. Like, you, the people who are determining who's meritorious didn't design the metrics for merit.
Yeah.
So yeah, so no, I agree, on its face, it's perfect. I'm just saying from our own lived experience, my lived experience with this organization and this group, that we've run into some tension. And maybe that's a good thing. That, that's not necessarily a bad thing, but I just wanted, for the record, to demonstrate that as early as today, or as recently as today, we've seen that tension, I think.
Yeah, and, and you'll see that across these different goal areas and priorities. I mean, that's just naturally, yeah. Nate, you're gonna jump in?
Yeah, so we're talking about collapsing four and five there.
Yeah.
And turning it into intentional and sustainable housing, transportation, and infrastructure.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess I would just say, you know, I kind of like built a natural environment, cuz it's simple, and also because it's not, i- it's, it's looking holistically at what a city is and not just housing as one specific thing detached from everything else, cuz housing is attached to everything, to services and retail and commercial and everything else. So, um, we could go around, we could run in circles a lot on this. I, I can, I can find common ground with, with any of these, but.
So Nate, I think what you're saying is you, uh, so the goal, what you wanna achieve is, is an intentional, sustainable, built natural environment? Okay.
To say that my visual CDO is not gonna let me look at housing, transportation, and infrastructure. It's either gonna be housing, infrastructure, and transportation.
Okay. Okay.
But, um, I do like the built-in, built-in natural environment, because it does take into account, the open spaces, and they're not like just infrastructure. Like, I think Caballero was saying, it's not just the road, the hard, like, the buses, like, it's the soft. Yeah.
Yeah.
The birds, the, the, like, the trees, all of those things in it.
So I think.
Does cover all of it.
Yeah, I think we, I think where we're, where we seem to be landing is four, and that, and that fourth one being collapsed into intentional and sustainable built and natural environment. Javier, are you, are you okay with that? Or do you like calling it out more?
I mean, I, I think some folks relate to the word built environment, you know? I'm not saying they don't, but I just don't know, like, everybody knows what housing and transportation is. So, I don't know.
Alright, I think what we maybe, we're pretty close here. And I want, I mean, when we can, you can take one of these out to the community and get some feedback, and then you can come back to this. I am worried that we, you know, we could get stuck on this for a while.
You ever met the Durham City Council?
Right, right.
Yep.
Well, the values, that was very, that was, that was quick. Alright. I'm gonna suggest that we, that we move to the priorities, the list of priorities, cuz we wanna go through the ones that you wanna take out to the community. And then for our grand finale, we can come back and you can decide which of the, which of those verbiage you wanna use to take out to the community. Is that okay? Okay. Alright. So, um, again, you identified, the, these are based off your previous set of goals. So there may be some things that ultimately would move into another goal, and that's okay, staff can do that for you. What we wanna, what we wanna focus on are, what are the, what are the really important things that you wanna see accomplished around this goal? And so what we did is, for the survey, we asked you to, to rank these, and you've got the scoring here. And what we're, what we're trying to do, as Sheri said, you've got about three that you, in your current plan, taking about five out to the community. We wanna see if we can, um, we can settle on these five. If there is something that is absolutely missing from here, we, you can add it, but our, our hope is to get to about five. So let's start with the, the, a safe community goal. How do these five land? And then, remember, there are tactical things within these, okay? Yeah?
Could one and, could one and three come together to make five?
One and, one, which?
It's like reduced deaths, especially for, like, reduced deaths completely.
You, you wanna combine the reduced gun violence and reduce vehicle deaths as, as a single? Okay. Is, is that?
I, I think you'd have to say by, by what mechanism? So you could do reduced deaths by gun violence and vehicular, right? But I think you're gonna have to name what kind of, and those are the two that are, like, we know from the data, those are the ones that we see the most, but I think you have to call it out specifically. And I think it would help, because we have the reduced gun violence, especially for youth, but then that second one, create opportunities for youth engagement. And I think that that's one that we really wanna, I mean, at least I'm really interested in making sure, cuz that, the youth engagement can come in all kinds of ways.
Yeah.
But it's something that's come up pretty consistently.
Okay.
I will say that I, I, the psychological, the psychological venue of reducing youth violence, I just, I'd like to focus more on positive youth engagement, and then reduction of youth violence would be a result of it.
Yes.
Say that again slowly.
Yeah, uh, just the idea of positive, focusing on the positive youth engagement. I believe that youth violence reduction is an outcome of that. But if we're starting with just focusing on youth violence.
Okay.
When we've left the majority of our kids out, you know? I think we're just starting from the wrong place when we're focusing on youth crime.
Would, would you?
I'm trying, I'm trying to address the water rather than the fish.
Yeah. And so I wonder if you go with that, then maybe, and I think Poe may jump in, that maybe you would wanna keep meaningfully reduce vehicle deaths, cuz that applies not just to youth, but.
And that's why I think they need, I think they need to be separate. Because, you know, vehicular death is, you know, uh, you, I mean, you, you could take the same approach by, you know, better highway design, better, better street design.
Yeah.
And you, vehicular death will be a reduction by cause, in effect.
Yeah, so I think, I think we're saying that first left-hand bullet, we'd, we'd drop that, if that's, if you agree. So you'd have focus on positive youth engagement.
And I think because you're addressing the youth engagement will lead to gun violence or will lead away from gun violence? I think it was you're trying to say, but then if you were to say, that line is in the middle, in the middle of the, but if you were to say reduce violence, that would capture a lot of the things too. So, like, if you're trying to stay, uh, more focused on the, the water, the violence that you're addressing will make all the fish.
Yeah, so what happens if you properly condition the water, right? Positive youth engagement yields more outcomes than just reduction of youth violence. It, it produces better job, you know, engagement.
I'm with you, I'm just saying on the other side, if we reduce the violence, and that would, yeah, that would as well lead to that.
When I think about answering the question of how do we create a safe community? The safe community is, you know, a myriad of things, you know? And when you're focusing on positive youth engagement, violence became, become, becomes one of the components that will be reduced.
Yeah.
Lack of engagement is a component.
Yeah.
You know, stronger families, you know, will be a component. Youth exposure, you know, travel, all those things can be a component of positive youth engagement. But if we're just focusing on violence, uh, the reduction of violence, then I think we're just missing so many other opportunities. So a safe community, you create a safe community by one of many things here in the priorities, positive youth engagement. That way, we wouldn't have to categorize a specific component. We will benefit from the, the vast benefit of all the things that kids been positively, positively engaged with can produce.
Yeah.
I think, uh, I, I would just encourage council throughout this process to, uh, to tell us what you want your outcomes to be, and that your words should reflect your outcomes. That i- if you want your outcome to be broad-based youth engagement, what we will, when, when we get into initiative development phase, we will deliver broad-based youth engagement. If you want a youth engagement strategy that reduces violence, we will focus on finding initiatives to target youth engagement on reducing violence. So I, i- if you believe that one will deliver the other, that's good. If you want us to focus on an outcome. If you want us to focus on an outcome, I'm asking council to be explicit about the outcome, kind of to your point about, you know, if you want us, if you want the strategic plan to deliver narrower roads, then we will get you narrower roads. If you want us to narrow roads to enhance road safety, then the initiatives are going to narrow it. So I'm not trying to weigh in on one or the other, but if you ask us or ask the, take out to the community a list that says do broad-based youth engagement, that may look different than if you say do targeted youth engagement to reduce violence. So I'm not weighing in on what you want, but what I heard you say is, I want to put the words here because I think the outcome will be here. And I'm just encouraging you to tell us the outcome you want so that we can focus the initiatives as clearly as possible on whatever outcomes council desires.
Got it. So I'm thinking about the culture of the entirety of the community, right? And I think there is a difference between a priority and a program. A priority is we want to make sure that we're focusing on positive youth engagement. A program is specifically toward reducing violence. That makes sense? That's how I'm looking at it.
Okay.
I mean, and I think that's, whatever the driver is, whether it's positive youth engagement or it's like engagement meaning like a job opportunity versus, you know, a parenting training or like those are all.
Which both will reduce.
Yeah.
Which both will reduce violence, just on those two examples. So I, for me, I'm thinking about, the next time we visit our strategic plan is probably, what, five years from now? So three, three years? So I'm thinking about what is the culture we're, we're setting? And then within that culture, what programs are we, like it's, it's too many approaches to be that specific in the strategic plan, I think.
Yeah, you, you really, your current plan has about three things that you're doing in each goal. And so, you know, we can take more than that out to the community and the community is going to have more ideas. So that's okay to have a few more things. We, I think what we want to try to avoid is having like eight or 10 or 12 different things right now because that'll, you know, that, that'll be a lot. So I, you know, I think if we've got, Javier, did you, did you have a, did you want to weigh in on this? Because we've got a couple of different ideas here and I also want to make sure that we're looking at the, just the survey results from your initial set of ideas.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I like the purple ones, right?
Positive youth engagement?
Yeah.
Okay. Reduced violence. Yeah.
Yeah, and I like the, I mean, I think that the, again, like I think it's the right, it's wordsmithing maybe, but it's, it's, it's conceptually like correct. I mean, and, and based on, it's what we hear all the time anyway.
Yeah.
Right? And so I think, you know, we under, we're, we're putting these goals out in front of community, but if the goals are completely out of left field from what we hear, then we're just like, it's not going to resonate with folks. So we hear this a lot.
And five is about, yeah, that's about the right level. And then you would have specific programs or initiatives within these.
Well, somewhere in there, I'm going to figure out how to get the caregiver some support.
Are we, are we, did you, you want to add, do you feel like something's not captured?
I was just saying, and somewhere in there, we're going to have to figure out how to make sure the care, because the, the positive youth engagement can be undone with, without caregiver support. So just, just making sure that, yeah, that comes in someplace.
Yeah. I'm going to suggest we move to the next one. So the next goal would be, so this is, these, the top five here, if you can read it, you've got it on your, on your handout as well. High performing organization, can you, yeah, there we go. Make it easy to access and view metrics of city goals for the public, develop comprehensive economic development plan. That potentially could move, again, this is just where you put it. So that could potentially move to the economic prosperity goal. Keeping, supporting our employees through pay and benefits, efficient government that prioritizes outcomes over process and deliver on promises from the $200 million in bonds that you just talked about. So those were, those were five and you've got a few other things that received some votes. So we want to check, anything you want to pull out, anything that's not represented in these green ones? Yeah. And then you.
No, I was just going to say, because I'm hoping that it doesn't take us five years, I mean, I'm hoping it doesn't take us one year to come up with an economic development plan. I feel like it's hard to see that as a strategic goal. Like can that not happen in, in this year?
Yeah.
I feel like that's not a long.
That, that could be something, that could be something you pull out from this.
I, I do want to clarify that putting something in the strategic plan doesn't automatically mean it'll take three years. So, you know, I, I think for us, it's more you telling us what your priorities are and we, you can always give us direction about and have conversations with us about your timeline. So I'm not arguing to keep it in or out, but the inclusion of something like that in the plan doesn't mean it won't be delivered until the plan is complete.
I would just say by the time you take it to the public, I would hope that we have something already.
Yeah.
I, at what point do we deem a, a strategic goal accomplished and it becomes a value in practice? We have so many metrics that you can go to.
Yeah.
That's just a thing that wasn't before, but now is dashboards.
Yeah.
I, I think we desperately need a comprehensive economic development plan. Keep supporting our employees through pay benefits. We, that, we, we taxed ourselves, we did a market study, we increased pay. That was a big debate a few years ago and now we, you know, we, I actually talked to a few officers, it's, no, I'm good, I'm, I'm good, my pay is good. You know, so we, we have accomplished some things and it's now just, it's a practice. We just did the living wage, you know?
So do you want to argue pulling that out, you think?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think one and three have been accomplished and now they are just, they're values because it's what we do. Encourage an efficient government that prioritizes outcomes over, I think we, we addressed that in the actual, gosh, the innovative, if, yeah, in the actual, I don't know if it was a goal or priority or what, but it was one of the four or five things.
Yeah, so that was the overarching.
Yeah.
Goal. These would be the things you are doing to help you accomplish.
To reach that, right?
Yeah.
To accomplish it.
Yeah.
So I think that that's repeating, you know? Well, I, I, maybe not. Carl might say something different. Deliver on promises from $200 million bond, we just talked about that today, you know? So I could, I would take that out. Empowering and incentivize good performance, I think that's the duplication of priorities, outcomes over process. So I would merge those two. Eradicate food and childcare, weathered necessity deserts. And that's a goal, but that works, that's fine. Adopt social housing, economic justice. I think that, that is addressed earlier. So, yeah.
Okay. I'm not sure we got all of that, but just to re, and Nate, I know you, do you want to weigh in specifically on, on that, but?
Do I need to repeat it?
Yeah, I think you've got, I think you're saying that first one would.
So one and three.
One and three would be pulled out.
I think we've accomplished.
Okay.
And now they're, they're practices.
Okay.
Period.
And then the?
I think we desperately need number two.
Okay.
So I'd highly prioritize that.
Okay.
Encourage inefficient government that prioritizes outcomes over process. I think that really addresses what the overall goal is, but I do think that, one, two, three, number four and number six, empower and incentivize good performance. I think they're saying the same things, just different words.
So, so keeping one of those.
Yeah.
Okay. And then five, delivering on the, on the promises from the bonds would be something that you would want to?
I think we're doing that now.
Would you want to keep that over the next three years as something that?
I think in general, it's not just the bonds, it's just deliver on prom, like deliver on our CIP, deliver on our, right?
To broaden that a little bit more.
Yeah, so it's not just about the bonds for me, it's just like on city projects that we are delivering when we say we're going to.
We deliver. We deliver.
So that.
We do it efficiently.
So that one would stay.
Yeah, because I think that that's something, to, to the whole point around, you know, innovative and efficient and high performing, I mean, we've had several updates on like certain projects that have lagged for a long time. I think it's one of the things that the public is certainly questioning us on. And so I want to be responsive to that kind of push.
Okay.
And then can I ask a question with the develop a comprehensive economic development plan? Do we want that one there? Do we want it in the shared, not what was shared economic prosperity? Now it's something else, I forgot.
It's collective, broad-based economic.
Yeah.
Which would be tweaked.
Yeah.
You want to put it in there?
I mean, that's what makes sense to me, but that's just, I'm one of seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just say, I think, I think most of these could, could easily fit in two or three or almost all of the buckets. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't get rid of any of those that have the red. First of all.
Oh, you would?
Kudos to the note taker for all the colors and shapes and writing here. You're moving so quickly, it's, it's impressive. Yeah, no, I think, again, like I think, I really like how intentional we've gotten to this process.
Okay.
Kind of collecting every single member up here's ideas, putting them down, going through the process of kind of ranking them. So I, I really like it, kind of where we've, where we've landed. So I just, I wanted to state that the, the top five thing, you know, again, like some of these could have ended up in a different bucket.
Right.
And might have made it into the top five.
Yeah.
And I feel like I kind of trust staff to, to understand that, you know, if something isn't in the top five in one bucket, it doesn't mean that it's not necessarily a, a priority didn't make it, didn't make it in. So I just wanted to, just wanted to state, state those things.
Yeah, and your staff would be, if something's important to you, they would make sure that it gets in one of the buckets.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess if, if we're speaking directly to, to these items, you know, me personally, I, I did my rankings, so they are already incorporated.
Okay.
So I can say them again, but, you know, like for me, I, I think I, I'd put eradicate food and childcare deserts maybe, maybe higher, but I also respect this process that we've gone through.
Okay.
I don't know when you pulled this together or I did mine privately. I was just going to say I did mine's. I don't know when you pulled it, this together, but I don't know if mine are in there or not, but.
I think if you did it, they're in there. Yeah. So you're making the argument, again, this is not your last take at this, this is what you want to take out to the community. So I think you're making the argument that you could keep these five that are in, that are in here as your, as your set of priorities to take out to the community.
The five, right?
The five, the, the top five that are, are green up there, we were just making notes.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
I, um, mic.
Oh, put your mic, do you have your, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I guess for me, when I think about this category, it, it's almost esoteric for me. This, this is anything that's outward facing, that's deliverable to the community. I see this category more as how we're going to deliver it, more so than, you know, I, I mean, delivering, eradicating food deserts may be by definition very inefficient process or it could involve, you know, throwing a lot of money at something. So anything that, you know, social housing, stuff like that, that, for me, this is about how the organization does what it does, how it arrives. Anything, any, any blanks we fill in or, or variables we substitute for the end result, for me, just, I, I just kind of see that as somewhere else.
Yeah.
This is about how quickly, how well, how efficiently we deliver whatever it is. When we start getting really prescriptive, like, you know, eradicating food deserts or so, I.
It's too much.
Yeah, for me, I, I just think that this is a very inward facing kind of self-aware of the organization itself, more so than, you know, filling in the blanks of what it's going to efficiently deliver.
Yeah, this is certainly your internal, but there, right now, one of these is delivering on some of these, you know, delivering on the bond as something that would be relevant. So the organization delivering on, on that would be relevant to the external audience. So I guess, you know, I guess the question, would you be comfortable including these top five to take out and get feedback? You know, letting your, letting your team give the, give the community a way in.
Can I just say, why, why five? Because I, some of these have a lot, some of them have a few, some of them could have gone into many different categories. I, I kind of just like having this that shows how they were ranked in each, each category, having the whole list. And then stuff like the bottom of the list in each of these, they're all, they're all good ideas.
Yeah, I think the, I, I guess the question is, you know, your, your structure is one where you typically have about three priorities for each goal and then you have a set of actions within each. So that's, you know, there's a lot that's embedded in these three. At this early stage, having more than three is fine to take out. You could even go up above five if you need to. I think the question is, is there something really important that's not captured in these top five that you want, you want to get, you want to make sure the public has a chance to weigh in on it? So you could certainly do that. It's not a magic number, but it's just a, a guideline. So.
I was playing with weighing in, so I'll weigh in. You know, I think this, this goal has always been a little bit of a challenge for council. I, I would just say, since this is the inward facing goal, you know, I, I would just reiterate that, that we as an organization take it as seriously that this be specific and achievable and as the other four goals. And I think my observation is the, the council does spend a portion of its time talking to us about how we do the work. So I, I do think like delivering on the bonds or recent conversations about how long certain projects take, you know, those can spur us to develop very specific initiatives around the performance of the government. And so, you know, to the extent that this reflects those types of initiatives or gives residents a place to name or rank their initiatives, that's how it's valuable to us. I, I completely concur that it's our job to do all the things as innovatively and as efficiently as possible. You know, residents could tell us they want us to have 24/7 customer service. They may tell us, you know, that, that, you know, they want a certain type of access to a certain type of department that they don't have right now. And so I do think for us, you know, I, I acknowledge that some of these things are things we always do. Those may or may not be the best priorities in this item, but that we are very prepared to respond to council or the community's directives as they pertain to priorities here. So I'll leave it at that. I'm not advocating for any particular priorities in, in, you know, specifically, but, you know, I don't want council thinking that we take some of, you know, for, I guess the other one, you know, the mayor, you made a comment about pay and benefits. You know, there are definitely things we've done that show clear commitment to pay and benefits in the past. We will have very hard decisions to make going forward about pay and benefits and depending on what council tells us about how you want us to prioritize those things, you know, that will be weighed against your other priorities. So I'll, I'll leave my comments there. I'm not, again, not arguing for any specifics, but I do want you to feel comfortable ranking or prioritizing things that impact how we do it.
So we've got up there, as you can see, four, what would be the priorities that you would take out. We've just ticking those things, Danielle. We feel okay about taking these out? We missing, is there something that we're really missing, Nate?
Take, I'm sorry, say that again, taking what?
Yeah, so we're just, just based on your feedback, just organized it around these four to the right. So the first, the economic development plan might be something that would go in another category.
Category.
Yeah.
Like?
With the shared economic.
Yeah.
Like the shared economic.
Yeah, but we wanted to, we, we put it, that's, someone put it there, so that's why we, we kept it there. So that, if that, that's still important and that would just, you would have staff move that to another category. Let's go to the, let's go to the third one. This, this is, this one, the second one is a little bit tougher. So this, this was the previous framing of it. We can zoom in a little bit. You can see the top five. There we go. Yeah, you can read it. Make our own neighborhoods more diverse, affordable, walkable, mixed use. True walkable retail street. Grow and implement transit access, including BRT, capital transit, percentage of residents living within a quarter mile walk, public park, playground. Percentage of residents living within a quarter mile walk, public park, playground, greenways. Strengthen the city's long range planning frac.
I think this one.
What's that?
Yeah.
Keep all the, keep all the ones in the whole list? Yeah, so that would, it'd be, and this is, this is a bigger category of things.
I feel like you can collapse some of them, though.
You want, you want to give it a shot?
I mean, you're seeing, like, establish more parks and open space, and it's like, grow a percentage of residents living within a quarter mile. I mean, the only way to do that is to establish more parks and open space. So.
Create a, create a true walkable retail street almost sounds polemical. I mean, as a, yeah, as opposed to untrue one, what is, what is?
Strip more than the rest of the city.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, project, can you use normal words?
It's not like we fight, arguing.
This was, this is what we captured on, one of, one of you wrote this on a sticky note, so we wanted to.
Argue with my. Strike the word true.
Maybe not the own, make our own neighborhoods, like, or be like, oh, just the council members' neighborhoods? Sorry, just like, right, like, make our neighborhoods more diverse, affordable, walkable, mixed use.
And walkable's in the first line as well, then we talk about walkable in the second one as well. Can we collapse those?
So collapse one and two, but the, the second one is specifically has a retail street.
So maybe it's make, I don't know.
Well, mixed use doesn't imply retail? Affordable, walkable. Diverse neighborhoods doesn't imply? I mean, if we want to explicitly use retail, but I, if it's a, if there's mixed use in the, that's not just referring to housing, is it?
I think that, that becomes more internal, like, who knows?
I mean, I think retail street's also pretty wide open, as far as people understanding what that means. I know what that means, just because it's a goal of DDI, but it's because they've done presentations in front of council about it.
Well, we've got walkable in both lines, so we can collapse that at least, right?
I just caution, you know, being too prescriptive on type, if it's something that is out of our control. Like, I, I know we talk about, you know, we, we deny some cases because it didn't have a commercial component to it. And as a small business owner, I know, I wouldn't put some, I wouldn't put a commercial space in some areas until it has more of a, a market grab around it. But if we have that goal and it directly conflicts with what's feasible privately.
I think to the mayor's point, well, in, in, to that point, how do we make, how do we make something more affordable?
That was my point earlier.
What are our tools to, we can't do price, we, the council can't dictate prices or anything, right?
Yeah, as you know, some of these are things you can directly do as government, some things you can have influence over or form partner, you know, so.
Yeah, that was my point about, you know, while my bias is, you know, toward residents who are less fortunate, the reality is not every resident's in that situation. And I, I don't want to neglect someone, like, housing is what we do. We, and, and our, our goals are to make sure it's accessible and attainable. That looks different to anyone. Our main focus is mostly on affordable.
Yeah, and that, and housing is actually, the ideas around that are in another one that we'll get to. And I think when you, now that you've reorganized this, that'll go into, that'll fall into this bucket, yeah. So staff is going to have to move these around.
Okay, well, in that case, because some are moving here, and we're only trying to take, like, five out to community, I mean, I think we will have to collapse them, I don't know. I think the, the piece around, I mean, it is in the comp plan, right? So like, that whole piece around. Yeah, so just to take it, so anything that seems a little redundant, maybe, like, I think, like, the two park ones are important, you know?
The, the.
Establish more parks and open spaces, and then the grow, the percentage of residents living within, like, those are similar, right?
Okay.
I'm sorry, Warren, just real quick, we will, yes, we will go ahead, because some of them are very similar, and I think we're going to get to our economy.
Yeah.
Yes, and there's a lot of similar ones in there, too. We will certainly do that. And also just remember, too, when we go out to the community, we are gonna, we're gonna change, we're gonna have to change the language, right? Use some plain language words. So we're also, we'll be working on that as well.
So, so we can, you're comfortable with that the important things that you want are on this list, staff can potentially reword, collapse? But we want to make sure there's not some, but this is one where you want, you're going to want to include a few more things, it sounds like, than you were.
If the housing.
Because it's a big, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Sheri.
One more thing. Because you did collapse those two, we will, we'll need to do more than five. I mean, yes, there is a, there is now a lot included in that goal, and so we want to make sure we're including, including priorities around housing, around transportation, around environmental, yes. So you're not going to be locked into that five number for that one, for sure.
And so Sheri, is staff comfortable in keeping all of these that are in here?
Yes.
Okay.
This one, yes.
Okay. All right. So let's go, we'll go to the next. This is the Economic Prosperity. This had a lot, and a lot of energy around this. So we've got our top five. So I think our question again is, if you look at these top five, is there something that's just absolutely not covered in these top five that you want to make sure you bring out to the community? Again, staff will, will do a little bit of language word smithing on these.
I, I think same thing, like, there's some things that could get collapsed, and you're going to get to the same intent. So I think overall, like, I may have ranked it low on my own, just because I was seeing it, you know what I'm saying? Like, I'm like, well, that, that's the same as this, or it's similar enough, or that it's the same idea, or whatever, you know?
Okay.
And then I think the comprehensive, the, that comprehensive plan one would need to get moved here.
The Cultivate Comprehensive Economic, oh, the, oh, the Comprehensive Economic Development Plan would get, would needs to be in here.
In here.
It would go in here, and I think a lot of these would just become kind of like bullets of that.
Of that plan, right? Like, to me, that ends up becoming the number one thing that we want to make sure goes out to community.
Okay. So, yeah, no, that's weird, we would be moving the Comprehensive Economic Development Plan into this category, and then the, the thought from council is that some of these would be sort of within that, fall under that.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And there are a lot of similar.
Okay.
For sure.
I, I, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I, I want to kind of hold intention, mobility and prosperity. And one, we say establish a framework for economic mobility, but then for our youth, is prosperity what we want to use for our youth at, at that point in their development?
Experience.
Oh, maybe mobility for them, or? We talk about mobility in the second point, and then.
Economic opportunity.
Something of the.
Would that be a word? Is that?
I, I think the opportunity, and I think we've got it here somewhere, like, you know, these ideas of around pathways for students, right, as they, as providing them either access to internships, support in finding a job, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. That's, is that good?
Absolutely. I was just struggling with prosperity, our youth burdening them with that.
Yeah, no, that's not for them. That's for them to build the skills to get, yeah, build the skills to get to the prosperity.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, the word small, the word small and the word business is used a lot here, but it, in no way, form or fashion, doesn't talk about supporting small businesses. And if we were to take small businesses, the, the worker-owned businesses to the small business community, like, that is a concept that we talk about, well, that's talked about here, that is not a practical thing that is actually, I mean, it is a practical concept, yes, but that's not what's happening in mass. And we, we, it's, it's, it's something we've talked about in the past, but I think we need to explicitly, in some form or fashion, talk about supporting the small business community. Durham is like 90, 95% small businesses, and we're not really talking, we're not talking about that at all, but, but, but worker-owned, like, I, I, my employee, my, my team members, they don't want to own my restaurant, and I don't want them to own my restaurant. I, I took on that risk, and that's what I went into business for, you know? So I just don't think that's like, I, I don't think that's like what's happening all over the place. I do think it's something that is happening some places, but I think we need to explicitly talk about one of our biggest and greatest assets in Durham, that's our small business community.
So that, yeah, so we're just taking some notes, we want to keep that third, that third line there, but just rework it a little bit, support, because right now.
Well, I think there are two separate things.
Oh, separate it out, okay.
I think worker-owned businesses is something totally different than supporting small businesses.
Okay.
They will eventually become that, but I think there are two different focuses.
And that, you'd like to, you'd like to have those separated and both included?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Okay, all right.
I just don't want to lose the worker-owned piece, and I don't know where we put it, but it has come up many, many years, and, and to the, I mean.
You don't want to lose it.
No, I don't. I mean, it needs to be really called out somewhere, I don't.
Okay.
But it's, for me, to, to the mayor's point, yeah, right now, there might be those small businesses, but what you see is, within a generation, those businesses will close down if there's not a plan to keep them going, especially the really small, like, one owner, two, right, like, people get, people want to ship, and then you, you lose that opportunity. And so what you see some long-term small business owners do, I've been in this thing for 20 years, I've been in this thing for 30 years, I'm tired, I want to retire, but I don't want this thing to go away after 30 years, and my blood's wet and tears. Oh, owners can take it over, and to the mayor's point, it's less risk for them. So the risk isn't being carried by that one owner, which is why there's a lot of power in that.
Yeah.
In that model, right? It's a way for, for long-term small business owners to, to leave their legacy intact.
Just informationally, we did just sign an MOU with Ali, making this, making their resources available with, for O E W D. And so I just wanted to let you know, there is an initiative underway, and, and Joshua Gunn is leading that partnership, and my thanks to Councilmember Baker and Councilmember Rist, who kind of brought some resources to us in that space.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think they, they're both, they're both important.
Yeah.
But I do think they need to be explicitly stated.
Separate, okay.
It could, the, the grow, the work, the worker owner could go down with the strength thing. No, where is it? Bring, bring better tools for worker ownership and co-op.
Okay, yep, okay. Okay.
Perfect.
So we've got, we probably have about seven for this. That's probably a pretty good number. Again, bring that out to the community, let them weigh in on it, you can come back and have another crack at it. Okay. Let's, Danielle, we've got, I think, one more, one more, okay.
Oh, my goodness.
So this is, this is a goal that, that you won't have going forward, but these priorities are ones that staff can move into one of the other goals. So we want to make sure that the, we don't lose these. So if you're, if you, if you feel that these are important, then you can direct staff to go ahead and populate them. Nate, you want to weigh in on?
Yeah, I'll just say, I, I love the top four.
Top four.
Yeah, I love the top four. And I don't know, I, I would want to know more about what is meant by encourage more investment in historic neighborhoods. I would, I would rather it be kind of like disinvested, invest in the disinvested neighborhoods. Or bringing in this one that I really want from, of eliminating, eradicating food and childcare deserts. I would love to get that one in somewhere.
Yes. I agree.
I'm fine with the childcare and food desert piece, but then it needs, I mean, we're not, that's not our lane. Like, that is the county lane, and I, like, want to be a good partner to them, but that is, that is not our charge. So I just want to be real careful, because we already struggled that, with that with residents, right? And, and when you pay a property tax bill, more than, you know, like, 60% does go to the county, and I think 42% comes to the city of Durham. So I don't want to shop out in the community that we're going to take on more responsibility for public policy issues that are, are quite frankly, not our historic lane.
Yeah, I, I disagree with that. I think it does involve collaboration with the county, and I wouldn't want to tell the community, hey, we're going to go and eradicate these enormous challenges, you know, in five years, you know? But that's the North Star, and land use is a big part of that, and zoning is a big part of that, but.
So could you direct?
But I, I also respect comments made by my colleague here.
Yeah.
Can I also, I, I think the way that the city would do it is different. And so it's like, if Parks and Rec is, is in partnership with a childcare center, or if, or, you know, Parks and Rec has a food truck, you know, road, like, those are the things that we would, I think they're in our lane differently, and the county does, does it in more of a food security way, but we can do it more in an economic way. And so there's opportunities, that's all.
So would you be comfortable with staff just wording it so that it's partnering or support or something, so it's not an explicit?
Or you can tie it to economic drivers, right? But like, there has, it has to tie into our core work, or we're just, we're just expanding our portfolio, and then we're going to do the things that we're supposed to really be doing less well, right? So that's where I'm at.
Okay, okay.
And, and then just really quickly, and y'all named it, but, you know, the, the increased public transportation that was kind of captured in that BRT one, and, and I do think, I mean, a strategic plan is three to five years, and BRT is, like, that is where we're going to be putting our, a lot of our transit dollars, so I don't actually want to lose the focus around BRT. So it is, yes, transit and, and walkability, but like, BRT, yeah, because that's where, that's where the federal grant dollars are going, things like that. And then.
So this one would, this one would go into that other?
Yeah, it can collapse into that other goal, and then I, I agree with Councilmember Baker around historic neighborhoods. I mean, there are historic neighborhoods that have gotten a lot of investment over the years, and they're beautiful, and we need to make sure that all of the historic neighborhoods get that investment, right? So I, I would want to figure out same, that there's some neighborhoods that were disinvested in. So that same kind of emphasis on, I mean, it goes back to the value of equity, right?
Yeah, so that goes to the, the manager's directive, understanding the outcome that you want to get to, and I think staff can work on the wording that, that can go out to the public on that.
I would just say, I would probably copy this, because I do think that the land use piece is part of the food deserts and the childcare, but the entrepreneurship of being in childcare or starting a food business would go into, I guess, the economic development planning.
Sorry, say, I just make sure I'm, we're tracking.
I would make the, the entrepreneurship of childcare and food industry like a priority under the economic development plan.
Oh, okay.
Agreed.
Like, knowing we have deserts, calling out the entrepreneurship of starting a childcare or a food-based business.
Yeah, like, if somebody needs to present an idea of like.
That should be under the economic development side.
Yeah.
But this, you might want to say specifically around land use, considering, you know, the food deserts or childcare deserts.
Okay, okay.
Because it's about, you know, the connected communities.
Okay. Yep, Mark?
Yeah, so I, I, this one prompted a, a lot of questions for me. Firstly, explore citywide housing strategy to offer affordable housing to all Durhamites, the rich ones, too? I, I, I guess I was, and, you know, you say, like, social housing, rent stabilized, are, I mean, are we telegraphing that we're going after at a, at a state legislative level, the ability to do rent control? You know, I, I just want to telegraph, I think it's been intoned already, you know, realistic kind of, you know, things. So what do we, rent stabilizing, when we say to all Durhamites, are, you know, so if you're wealthy but want to live in a, an affordable housing unit that's available to you, is, is, so I'm just wondering, what, what does that mean practically? Overhauling Durham's homeless, overhauling the whole system, overhauling it to ensure the best possible outcomes for unhoused populations? Again, to, I think, Councilmember Caballeros, that by definition involves the county. We've got a continuum of care for homelessness now. Are we, are we suggesting that it's, is this editorial about its current efficacy? Are we saying it's failing, needs to be, you know, overhauled and best possible outcomes as opposed to the ones we're getting now? as opposed to the ones we're getting now? I, I guess some of the language for me is, is just a bit squishy and, and, you know, homelessness involves the county again as well. And proactive about preventing gentrification and displacement? I'm not, I'm not sure I know what that proactively preventing it. Do, are we going to assert ourselves now in private sales of land? Or kind of set up a nexus or, 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 you know, a matrix of who and when you can sell and who you can sell to? Is that really within the purview of, you know, local government? I like the idea. I wish we could be proactive about it, but we, we've learned historically that even sometimes when the government spends money to improve areas, that has actually spurred gentrification, à la South Side. So I just, you know, it's a bit, some of the languages, I, I don't really understand what that looks like in terms of actual
Yeah.
Policies and actions.
Yeah, and these, you know, again, these, these were, these were priorities that you all captured and so we've got
I know we did it, you tried to say we did.
I know, I'm just, but, and I think it's good because then we get it out there and then you can look at, and then, then when we know what the outcome is that you want or the questions that you have, then staff can then wordsmith this before it goes out to the public. So, yeah, I, I guess before we just jump in, I think, Sherry, we've got, we've, we have some input on housing and unhoused from the previous goal. I think that, I, I think we do, but these would fall into the other, these would fall into the other goal area. And into the infrastructure, into the vibrant, yeah, the vibrant. Yeah, okay. And so I guess my question is, do we, does staff need more guidance beyond this in terms of wordsmithing these, particularly these?
Well, I mean, we could, we could wordsmith all day. No, I think, I think we're good. I think we're good. I mean, we're going to be going out to communities, we're going to keep these pretty short, high level, otherwise, you know, sorry if our resident's going to take them 20 minutes, we don't want to ask that, but yes, so we'll, we'll go ahead and go through these and, yeah, simplify them and take them all. And we do have a very large goal, so there's going to be quite a few on that one.
I want to be clear, I, for me, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to be cutesy about it, I literally do not understand. So it's not just about wordsmithing for me on these, it's about, I literally do not understand the, the concept
Yeah.
Of what that, you know, means. So I just want to be, you know, clear, it's not, it's not just for me at least, language, I'm talking about actual meaning and concept.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you want to?
I think in, in practice, it's 505 West Chapel Hill Street, you know, creating some options there that would prevent gentrification, so to speak, or displacement, giving folks opportunity. Liberty Street, like I think we're doing that, but we need a whole lot more outside of just downtown. I think what we're doing on Thetville Street also, if we don't get it done, then gentrification will take hold.
I'm not sure I understand. What do you mean by five?
So being proactive about adding housing to 505 West Chapel Hill Street or doing the partnership with the bond for Liberty Street. Well, now it's the, I'm sorry, the Vanguard and what you see with the county with 500 West Main, I mean, East Main and 300 East Main. Like those are projects that are working proactively to try and prevent gentrification from taking hold, whether it's rental or ownership, partnering with Habitat, you know, like those are the things that we're doing to prevent gentrification or displacement.
Yeah, I, I saw them as increasing our affordable housing.
I think both, they're
Maybe, I, maybe.
If we increase affordable, it's like the, the positive youth engagement, however you name it.
I think
The outcome is to prevent the displacement.
My, my biggest fear is when we do take this to the community, projecting things that we can't deliver on. And again, I, I talked about this earlier, you know, like I, I take, I, I'm really worried about that very first one. Like Councilmember Caballero just, she's, she just presented a housing strategy that had a lot of people in it. And it, again, we do housing, you know, and I just don't want, I was at a, at a forum last night actually, and a lady came up to me and she said, what about people who don't need affordable housing? And, and I, you know, it was, it was, it was a bit jarring because every question that we were asked in the community is about, you know, affordable housing. And even advocates who talk about housing, they talk about affordable housing even though they may live in a million dollar home. So I, I, I want to be very careful, like when it says, explore citywide housing strategy to offer affordable housing to all Durhamites. Like I, again, I go back to the housing strategy that was done because it addresses a housing strategy for everyone. We need how, all housing types at all income levels. It's impractical to only focus on one type of housing.
Would you, would you be comfortable for the purpose of the community input, having something broader like that, exploring a housing strategy?
And I'm, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Do you, I don't, I don't know that the city's government would get involved in any other form. Like I don't think you get involved with luxury, like we're not going to build luxury housing.
No, no, we do housing. Housing comes before us either way. I mean, not every, not every project comes before us as affordable housing. They, most of, overwhelmingly, most of them have a percentage that they proffer.
You're talking, you're talking about zoning cases, but I'm talking about staff actually doing projects. Is there any other type of housing we would get involved in, like put tax dollars towards other than?
What I'm saying is I don't think we should limit ourselves. I think we, we do housing rather than, than, you know, like either
So you feel like, you feel like the city should participate in some type of luxury housing project?
Not necessarily luxury housing, but for example, let's say we're trying, like what's happening with DHA right now, we're supporting DHA. DHA is no longer building just one income level housing. They're supplementing market rate with the, the required units that they have. And we do want to partner with those projects to expand the capacity overall, to be able to house more people, especially the folks that need it most. So either we go explore a housing strategy to offer affordable housing to Durhamites or, you know, but to all, I just think that, of course, you guys can do some wordplay, but I, I'm very sensitive to what the expectations will be. Like rent stabilized, includes social housing, like those are concepts, but when it goes, when it leaves this room, folks are not going to be as policy-rich as we are and we have to be really sensitive to that, you know? Because someone may come back and be like, well, the city council asks us, how can we do affordable housing? Then they come back and say, we want only affordable housing. And I don't want to put us in a position, you know, a position where we're overly prescriptive and we get to the point where we can't put any action behind it or we're a policy.
So Danielle's just listening and taking, and just replacing it. So broadening it and not having as much specificity is that one?
It goes back to overuse of adjectives.
Yeah.
The more adjectives, the less action that we can do because it becomes more subjective.
This is what I'm saying, so if you already have a housing strategy that covers everything, there's never enough, like in this conference, like there's never going to be like enough that we can do, like we can't afford to do all of the affordable housing. That's the piece we need to focus on. It's the reason we did the 30% AMI as opposed to the 60% for Willard Street or other projects.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think it's just a matter of just what can we actionably put forth?
But that's what I'm saying, we actionably have been putting forward.
You know, not the Durham council for 10% of the population or something like that.
Yeah, and so it's worded now as, as a focus on a housing strategy to offer affordable housing. So it's sort of focusing it in, but not getting into the detail of rent stabilization or
I can live, I can live with that.
But since it's inclusive communities, would it, should we say mixed?
Yeah, well, this, this goal would go, this goal is going away.
Yeah, it's getting collapsed in the other one. That's, I'm kind of, because this is moving into the other one, it's kind of hard to actually
I know.
See what's happening. So I just think, yeah, I think housing, let me see, housing. I guess it would be affordable housing options to Durhamites or to, you know, because, I mean, to the, so some of the things we may get into is actually providing workforce housing, which is not the same as 30% and that is not, right? So like, right? So it's like, I don't want to, like, right?
This is still pretty broad, I think.
Right, so as long as it's, yeah, broad is fine, I just don't, we have, I think broad housing strategies for different types of populations is how we're going to get ahead. That's, 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 that's going to end up being, because 30 to, I mean, the amount of 100% AMI for a family of four right now is like $120,000 for, for us. So there's a whole bunch of people who fall well out of that who are not 30% AMI either. Do you see what I'm saying? So like our housing strategies will maybe need to be broader than what we had to deliver with Willard Street, just because of our area median income increasing over the last few years. So I think, so having somehow putting it out into the community that we want to prioritize a multitude of ways to deliver housing.
Would you want to keep the home, the, the second one, the unhoused population as part of that?
I think unhoused folks also need housing, so you're
So kind of you, that would be
Right, that's what the task force did and we didn't get to talk about it today, but like, that's the point. The point is different strategies are going to be different target populations.
Okay.
And the city may have to do a lot of those types of strategies.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's just going to keep coming back. When I, so when I said 30% affordable, it's 30% affordable to whatever income. So if you have zero income, 30% of zero is zero. So it's still, like instead of saying affordable, it is that 30% of whatever you can pay as opposed to just saying affordable. So it's different from the 30% AMI, 6% AMI. This is like 30% of what you have to pay out in a month or what, yeah. It's going to keep coming back to that.
Thanks. I'll just add, the second one, the overhaul Durham's homelessness.
Yeah.
We're actually in, in gate, right now, we're moving forward with a strategic plan on, on that particular.
So you want to keep that in?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we want to reword it, but
Okay.
But we are moving forward with a, a bold
Okay.
Strategic plan in that area. I actually still like, I still like the increased public transportation use in addition to the BRT kind of
Okay.
Both. I like the wording of the first one, but I, you know, if we want to, if we need to modify it, I'd be open to that. And I have to go and I love you all.
Well, wait, before you, before, can you, can you wait just like a couple minutes, Nate? All right. So we, I think we've got, we've gone through all of the goals. You're very patient with this process, but we wanted to respect what you put up there and work with that rather than having staff work on it and then you see something and you're like, where did our words go? So that's why it's a little sort of, it takes a little more time to do it this way. But I think what you've done is you've given staff the direction that they need to be able to work these to a point where they can then take it out to the public. And so the next step is that, do you want to, I can share, the next step is that the staff is going to, will work with this to take these notes, put it in a forum, and I think it's really next week or the week after that this would go out and the community engagement will begin.
Did you have a question?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. Could you go back one, one movement thing? Is this prezi? What is this?
It's a, it's like a mural board.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's like a whiteboard, yeah.
We're heads, we're, be proactive about preventing gentrification and displacement. Can we say be proactive about promoting revitalization?
Okay.
No? Yeah.
I mean, that could speak to also government investment in bettering a neighborhood.
Yeah.
I mean,
What do we move forward rather than just not, like trying to make something, make sure if something doesn't happen? Revitalization gives us like that, that permissive forward thinking.
We could just say investment though, right? Or something like, because revitalization folks also are commenting on that word now.
So we're providing it to revitalization and investment?
Yeah, or just, yeah, I mean, like however we want to do it, public dollars in a thing is essentially what all of these things are. The reason, however you do it, it's public, it's public money, it's collective money to improve a thing. However you, whatever fancy word we have to say it or not, like that's essentially what our projects are. Our projects are taking public dollars and putting them in something to improve it.
Whatever we say, I don't want to get rid of displacement though. You know, preventing displacement.
Absolutely. I, I was gonna say something about increased transportation use until Councilmember Caballero had recommended in collapsing with BRT because when I read increased transportation use, I don't read that as it says use. I, so I'm thinking about what we currently have. So I'm reading that as getting more folk to ride the buses that exist right now as opposed to expanding the transportation footprint.
Use.
Or making it more robust. Use, if it's increased transportation use,
Yeah.
That means what we have right now, use it more. So when, when it was recommended to collapse, that's why I didn't say anything, but if we're going to, if we're going to leave that, then when I read, as a layperson, I would just say, oh, they want me to ride the bus more, what exists right now. And I think that's qualitatively different than making our options more robust, route expansion, adding lines. To me, that's saying you need to use more which we have right now, which I think is a good thing, by the way, but.
And I think you need both.
Yeah, so we would keep both, I think you said we'd keep both of these.
You don't get the BRT projects, you don't get better transit unless you have higher use and you don't get transit if there aren't people living in a space to get to the thing.
Or the BRT is for a specific type of usage that already exists.
Right.
That we're catering to a specific niche rider, you know, who's working in certain places and they make, but we want to make usage more, you know, we want to increase
Both and.
Right.
Nate, thank you. Any, we're, we're, we're at the endpoint. Sherry, do you want to just, next steps?
Yes, so next step.
Sorry.
Yes, we're going to take all this information. We obviously have some work to do here, but yes, so we have community conversations we're going to be starting in another week or so. And so they're going to be going out, that new department, and then we're going to have a survey that will be going out and also using our annual residence satisfaction survey. We'll be all back to you again in February with all, with all that data summarized for you all to go ahead and make that final framework before we start phase two. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I feel like I'm like, but this is, this has been very helpful. So thank you so much to everyone and did you have, did you have anything to add or? Anyone else want to add anything?
Before we close, I just want to thank Warren and Danielle who've done a fantastic job as our facilitators and
Thank you.
And our staff who've put a lot of work in, in between September and now to try and get this in a usable format. I know this can be a little bit tires, tiring and tedious, but it's really, really important and we're looking forward to doing great things with the work that you've given us.
This, this doesn't have anything to do with the strategic plan and I should have brought it up under other matters, but bringing the housing task force to subsequent work sessions. So I just wanted to flag that for my colleagues. I've already asked the mayor if that is something that can happen and he said yes.
And, and under other matters as well, you may remember a conversation about making a designation about the Durham Museum of History officially designating that. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to put that on our radar as well.
Yep.
All right.
So just as a reminder, process wise, council members, you will work with your staff to, to put that on the agenda for a future meeting. I, I will schedule it, but you're, you will enter it. And then once it's at that meeting, if there is a desire for council for staff to do analysis or work, the council will direct staff at that time. Thank you.
All right, guys, thank you all so much. We've settled the agenda. We are officially adjourned at 5:09. Thank you.